All right, call the meeting to order at 5:31. We have some announcements, call for volunteers, we still have openings on several town boards and committees. There's a complete list of openings online on the volunteer tab on the homepage of the town website. Memorial Day Parade, Monday, May 26th at 10:30 a.m. And the Page School Conditions Assessment Information Session will be May 28th at 6:00 p.m. in the Page School in Haverhill. So mark that on your calendar.
Are you putting that together in conjunction with angry somebody who's putting it together?
Thanks.
Yeah, so we've been, we've been working with GNA on the draft slides. They had sent us over a slide deck midweek last week. Christine and I each went through it when we met, she and I met Wednesday, provided our comments back. I'm happy to circulate it if you'd like to see the draft. They had not put in all the photos, it was more wanted to make sure we had the right content and flow. And then they're gonna go back through and populate it with photos and as appropriate, short video clips to illustrate different aspects of the report. The file was about 68 megs, I mean, has some photos, but it was there were. So, you know, we had some comments we sent down, I think it was good, I think it'll be better with our comments. But actually, I want to be clear, I think it was good, I think their first draft slides was very good. So we got our comments, we have a working meeting next week with Jonathan and Brian as well with GNA. And if there's a board member who's available and would like to sit in, be happy to have someone there. I don't recall if it's Tuesday or Thursday, I think it's next Thursday, but I can get you the time if you're interested.
Are you interested, Chris, that you're still done?
No, I was just hoping I was getting done.
Oh, yes, yeah, 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 in terms of format, my expectation, although actually I haven't talked with Wendy or the board about this, but my assumption would be we would post it as a select board meeting and that you guys would convene. And that there'd be, we envisioned three tables, one with you as a board kind of, kind of to the, on the front of the side. And then the architects as kind of the primary, because they'll be doing most of the presentation. And then myself, Christine, Brian, and Jonathan, assuming Jonathan's willing to do that. And then I think the intent, my thought in having the board convene is that after their presentation, there's going to be a lot of Q and A and discussion. And, you know, it seemed like the select board might be best positioned to facilitate that. So if you're uncomfortable with that, that's kind of how we envisioned, there's three tables up front. And it's a pretty lengthy presentation, but I think it's very, it's very well done. As we know, there's a lot of content to cover. And it's a, because it's a standalone meeting, I think that you go into some detail on the slides and still allow plenty of time for discussion. And I want to make sure Brian and Jonathan are part of, kind of visibly part of it right from the start, because I think a lot of the discussion will naturally go to things that they ultimately know the most about operationally. Yeah, I think we're gonna be in good shape in terms of room setup. We don't know if we'll have 50 people or 300 people, we would, we would love to have several hundred people. And we're doing everything we can to get the word out about that.
Any thought to having the school send it home with, you know, some students?
When, when we sent the news announcement last week, I sent it over to Justin and asked him to circulate it through Kentucky as appropriate.
Yeah.
Obviously defer to him on how and whether to do that, he did get right back to me and said he would get it to the Page families as well as the middle high school families. So I don't know specifics, but I expect if it hasn't already, that that's gonna go out through the school communications. And I did reach out to Dave Rogers at the newspaper and he acknowledged receipt. And my guess is they're gonna run a story ahead of the meeting.
Great.
So, you know. Great.
All right, item A is public comment, anybody online or the audience want to make a public comment? Item B, Town Manager Updates.
Okay, a number of staffing dynamics, you know, tonight's Jim's last meeting, tomorrow's his last day. Been glad to have him here, he's done a lot of good work and we'll be sorry to see him go, but we know he'll do very well in his new position down in Denver. And we'll certainly keep in touch. Clay Hutchinson, his last official day was last Wednesday. He, we have kept him on in a very limited role to ensure continuity through the transition. And he's working with the COMCOM Chair Molly to make sure on any active permitting or enforcement issues that we've got that institutional memory. But thankfully with the backup support with Jangiri's position, we have, you know, we have good continuity. And we think that transition's going well. For both of those positions, we've gotten a couple of dozen or more applications each. In fact, one of them we've got over 50 applications. So that's been, we've been shortlisting those. And we started interviews for both of those positions this week. Those will both continue at least into next week and probably the week after. And with conservation, we're anticipating it's likely to include a second round interview, finalist interviews with, with the commission participating as well. So, and then with partner rec, I mentioned that just because we did post seasonal job and Ryan and I conducted an interview on Monday. Local resident terrific, happens, you know, he's a member of the volunteer firefighters and good worker, very relevant experience, including municipal rounds. And so we went ahead and hired him. And so that's great to get, there's a lot of weed whacking and things that we don't have the, you know, full-time staffing to do. So that seasonal help is very important. Next item, Library Feasibility Study Working Group, Wendy and I are both part of that working group. We went to the initial meeting on, on Monday, I don't know if you had thoughts, I thought it went very well. We had every, every last member was present. And I think it was a really good initial discussion. Obviously, the jumping off point for that work was the five-year library plan approved in 2022, where the library board identified a need for expanded space. And we had some very specific discussions about process and everything from design, designer selection, procurement issues, state funding, no state funding, the pros and cons there. And some very good guidance the Inspector General's Office has put out about feasibility studies for public building projects. Obviously, we're a ways away from any actual building project. At this point, we have no idea really what the scope of a project would be. But that was the whole purpose of this working group is to really try to take this kind of generalized idea of need and try to crystallize that on specifically what opportunity or opportunities we might want to engage someone to do a feasibility study. So just for example, the, the idea of accessing the second floor, making it compliant with an elevator lift, that in and of itself could be something you study, but that's just one of several ideas. So I think it was a good start, we anticipate that to be four or five meetings over the summer. Now, the expectation is, I know likely there's gonna be a funding article at the fall town meeting to fund a feasibility study. And a lot of this is really what would be the scope of that study.
My first question is why not just put an elevator or lift to the second floor if it's, you know, it's contained within the existing space to go across the street soon?
Yeah, so Stan is part of the working group. And his point was that that space is not usable as is, so why would you invest in putting an elevator? It's, it has slope ceilings, it's very limited.
I don't know space.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I think having him on the working group is really valuable.
It's not to say you couldn't do it, but to make that second floor actually usable space more than a very limited footprint, you'd be talking about changing the roof grade and which isn't, doesn't say you can't do that, it's just, it's a, there's, yeah, there's a ripple effect there.
I mean, they're looking at, they would like to have community rooms, private study rooms, tutoring rooms, so make it more of a community gathering place than just a book checkout place, which is where libraries are headed. I just, I think this working group model was Angus's idea, I think it's really a great way to approach projects that affect many different departments or committees. And so I'm really pleased with how it started and who's really engaged. I went to the library trustees meeting the next night and they were all very supportive of it, so.
That's great. Good, so we'll keep the board apprised as that goes forward. And that is a public body, all those agendas, we most are hard posted or the one agenda going forward. So I'll post it in minutes and all of that. So if people want to track that, we did set up a committee page on the town website. Next item, just brief update on the pickleball courts. We're, we're working on engaging the engineering support that we'll need for the filings for both planning board COMCOM. The base data is there between the survey and the wetlands delineation that we got done earlier this spring. We got some good feedback from the planning board at a meeting a week or two ago. That gives us a good idea of what some of their questions or expectations may be. So we can make sure that we can try to hit the mark on the first submit all. And yeah, we'll, we don't have a expanded scope yet with the engineer, but they're working on that. Next item on the MEVA board, I think the town's been well served these last few years. That Jim has kind of stepped up and represented the town, that's led to some very tangible improvements to service as well as just a great line of communication. We have a good dialogue with Noah Berger and we met with him remotely in the last week or so. And we want to keep that representation going, so I am gonna go to their meeting in June. And then going forward, their board meets about seven times a year. Their next one is June, then it sounds like they don't really meet much over the summer. So that'll give me some time to get some direct insight into the type of activity they do. Although I was, I did play a similar role in my last job up in Maine and have some idea the kinds of things they, they're talking about. But I don't envision being the principal rep. So I'll be working to gauge where that might best fit among other staff.
Jim, what, the other people there, can you generalize what function in their town government's doing?
It's arranged, so everywhere from town managers to planning, economic development staff, town clerk. But there's lots of services, director from writing and so there's really a pretty good range. But I would say the majority are planning or economic development or town managers, or town leaders, or state cares.
When we met with Noah, we also shared with him the list that Butch had put together, the board's request following the discussion back in September of locations along the corridor that would be based on their physical characteristics, potentially suitable for, you know, a sign. So that's something they're gonna, they, they intend to roll that out regionally. So once they have multiple towns, that's when the signs should be installed. So we'll have plenty of advanced notice of that location timing for that. But that will obviously bring more visibility to the fact that there is now regular bus service in West Gilbert. The cybersecurity summit, Christian went to that, I had been signed up, we were gonna go down together, but with, with my workload, I just wasn't able to make it. But he went and it was very positive. And there's some kind of follow-ups that we plan to work on as a team over the next several months. I think we, as I've said before, I think we're in good shape for, but, you know, the threats are constantly evolving and we have, we have to stay focused on, on that. This next issue is, is a minor issue, but I wanted to include it because, you know, you can just see like every little thing. All of a sudden, you're dealing with four different state agencies. And it seems like a pretty obvious just clerical error with the house budget. But, you know, it implicates about $30,000, which is about two cents on the tax rate. And so anyhow, I, I think we'll get that resolved and it's not gonna be part of the eventual project. But I think it illustrates that, you know, we pay attention to these things. And really, it's something we have to solve ourselves, it's not something our state rep is really, you know.
I'm like a lot of people throughout the year, just kicking the can.
Yeah, yeah.
Like go see this person, they acknowledge it's an error and then they say, go elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of funny to read the email chain.
Yeah, just gotta carry it out to the ground and get that, get that resolved, but. And then finally, I included Jenny's year-end memo, just for, that, that went to all departments and board's committees. That's a typical end of year closeout. And two other things that there's, there's not specifically listed, but we did have the bid opening today for the construction bids for the Page Pipe State Crosswalk. We got two bids, both were right in the range of what we had budgeted, with one being under budget and one being a little over. They were what, 302 and 380, those are two numbers. And the estimated cost was 366. So we have one apparent qualified bidder that's within budget. Obviously, there's a lot of vetting and due diligence that goes on. But it appears, you know, promising that we'll be able to have a qualified construction contractor to get that under, under there this summer.
Excellent, can I make a comment on Jenny's memo? I'm reading it, I just loved it because she spells out exactly what you have to do when you have to do it. And she points out, I love the sentence, this is not best practice, we should avoid them all. But you know, it's just so clean and it just, I appreciate the work she does with it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, she does incredible job. And then finally, just briefly on the Coffin Street coves, that's another one that, as you know, has been in permitting for some time. We did get the updated plan set today, Butch and Christine are working closely on that. And that goes before the COMCOM Monday night, even as a continued hearing. And so that continues to be in permitting, but we're hoping to get that fully signed off so we can start moving forward on planning construction for that, for those, I should say, the two coves.
All right. Item C, it being 548, that's you, Butch, right, payment plan for 2025.
This is a list of paving projects open to accomplish in 2025 season. Bachelor Street, from Action Cove to Cherry Hill Street, rural road, there's sections that were done, that were not done last year due to the deterioration over the winter, in order to save the actual pavement, it's gonna be surplus it. Bridge Street, coal planning and resurfacing section that needs restoration, it's starting to fall apart a little bit. Church Street, coal planning, resurfacing, the rough section, in preparation for a full resurfacing next year. Town Hall parking, Town Hall 491 Main Street, parking lot. Central fire station, the front apron, as you can see, was really run it up pretty good. I have a contractor already going that, they're gonna remove that and put some, a little bit stronger material in there. Montclair Road, the top section, it hasn't been touched in a while and possibly West Lane. Not this year.
So.
Sorry, with the coves, that would.
No, that's okay, actually, it's not there. I misunderstood.
I got, I got you.
Thanks.
So West Lane, that's the road off River Road, right?
Correct.
Isn't that private?
Nope.
Okay.
No, and we didn't do it last year and anticipation that eventually we would do the rest of River Road. Since we're down there, I put it on the list, if we can do it while we're there, it saves a moving fee, you know, of equipment. So if we can do it.
Ben? Any questions from the board? Town Hall, is that out front or is it down the back too, or?
It's gonna do everything, but I know there's planning for a cross, new crosswalk location, movement sidewalk, and possibly a green area out front. So when we get to that, I will be talking with Angus to find out exactly what we want to do. But it's gonna be the right side anyways, if we can on the right, but not back.
I just was curious.
Yep, no, it's kind of a wait and see on the rest of it.
Yeah, we're at a concept planning stage, so whether and when anything happens, that, that would be a subject for future board discussion once we have the concept plans, you know, updated from TEC with the input that we provided at the meeting a week or so ago. So.
Can I just ask a curious question, coal plant, is that where they're beginning to take right or just take a certain amount?
Yep, they're gonna take two inches off and replace with two inches.
Okay.
And Church Street, is that just where the water lines were dug up or is it the whole?
No, it's, it's, it's the rough section that incorporates some of those.
Okay.
And speaking with Brock, they said that's the way to go, where they're so close together.
Yeah. And so that contractor's not coming back to do any more repairs?
To a point, but the way that they were gonna do it, you would still feel the hopes and the residents have been voicing their opinions.
Yeah, yeah.
They say no obidos.
Excuse me?
No obidos.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we did talk about that. And, and, and I think the approach Butch has set out is make sure that when the road is fully repaved next year, which has always been kind of part of his, his thinking, that it would be seamless. Whereas if it's, if it's not done the way he's suggesting, even with a full repaving a year from now, you'd still have a little bit.
If you did, if you did the individual cross surfaces, yes.
Okay, and the 2025 season is until when, November or October?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to get them in somewhere in the end, end of June after school's out. And somewhere in the middle to the end of August before school starts, that's, that talks for now.
Right, and then will this be up on the town website so residents are aware that?
Yeah, we can do that and I will notify them when we start working in the area. I will put notices in their mailbox, they haven't, they've enjoyed, you know, seeing that. And I have Max put it on the town website and it doesn't seem to be a whole lot of disruptive residents doing that much.
All right, any questions for us, any input?
I don't think so. So what contractor would do the whole list? Uh, no, I have Brock's and I have a couple of the small contractors coming in to do, I kind of break up the small stuff. That way if I have an emergency or anything, they can respond very quickly.
Do we need a motion on this or?
Uh, no, no, historically, it's been the superintendent presents it. If their questions or concerns, we can talk about it at a future meeting, but if not, he goes forward.
It's good, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Butch.
Have a good night.
You too.
Item C, B is an update on communications with Verizon.
So unfortunately, there hasn't been much movement. It's on Verizon at this point, we're waiting to get license green from them. And then we could negotiate moving forward from that. But there are licenses that are well over a year in expiration in other towns.
In our region.
Region.
In our region.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we haven't even, ours hasn't expired yet. And so we're kind of at the bottom of the list because they have so many backlogs that they have to deal with. So at this point is, the lawyer for KP is speaking tomorrow. And so we'll get an update on potentially where we are on the list. But with so many that are expired and they have not gotten new licenses renewed yet, I'm assuming that ours will be postponed for a little bit, at least past my tenure.
Yeah, so does that mean the contract terms will just continue last year?
Yeah, and something we've been pushing as, as much as we can for, for a while. And unfortunately, aligns with my prior experience in this town and in other towns, that it's just, it's very difficult to get the cable companies to focus on it. And so, yeah, we, we continue to push through town council primarily because they, one of their attorneys deals with us all the time. This is kind of his, his specialty within the firm. And so he's got kind of a line of communication with both Verizon and Comcast. But he told us right, right out of the gate, the very first conversation we had, you know, because we said we don't want this to go to the last minute. And, and he said he'd do his best, but that it's, it's, this is like, I, I don't really understand it because it's required and, but it's something that they don't put a lot of priority toward, that the cable companies don't.
Right. So with the incoming town clerk, we're in John Don't offer, is that still to be determined?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I think we put it into the draft description, I think, didn't we, or did we? I hope so. If not, it would be. You know, obviously, we share an office suite, so we're pretty much anytime there's any new information, we, we share that. But it's, it is, it is one of those things that I, it's, it's good to have someone other than me have to push it because it's, it's tedious, it's very tedious.
Okay, good. Item C, C, official local election results.
So I can kind of bash the two together, both things are in C and D. Both the election results as well as the reports for the annual answers, the numbers are included in the packet. I mean, the little pickup that exists in state law is only the town clerk who produced, the town meeting reports can edit the town meeting reports. So if there are any, please let me know by tomorrow.
Is that final?
It is in the sense of if there's nothing else that needs to be corrected, that's the permanent record. So if there are any things that you see typos and everything like that, we can get them out.
We know where to find you, come on.
Tomorrow. But so, it's supposed to be only the person that produces it can actually edit that. It's a weird old law that still exists. But as for final, we've sent in everything for bylaws, for zoning and town bylaws to the AG's office, which is a nine-day turnaround for them to be able to get back to us regarding approval or disapproval. But assuming everything is approved, zoning takes effect, zoning bylaws that we pass takes effect the date of passage, so goes back to April. And any town bylaws that are approved take effect on approval by the AG's office. But otherwise, Jenny and I have gone through everything for year-end kind of stuff. All the numbers are correct and in the right places from the right sources. So that stuff's actually been wrapped up very well. I certified the election this week with the town board registrars. And overall, it was really well-run two-week thing that we did.
Yeah.
I think overall, town, town meeting ran pretty smoothly. Considering the massive, I mean, this was the second largest town meeting we've had at least in 25 years.
Yeah.
And the only reason I say that is because I don't know what the numbers were prior to 2000. The only other bigger one was the, the Penn Tuckett. Town meeting ran really well, that election, we were done counting by 9:30 or something.
Yeah, throwing the paper ballot into the town meeting was, I mean, kind of commendable, but if you pull that off without it being a big distraction.
We all agree that there's other things we could do to, to make it easier to move there next time.
Okay.
Potentially multiple locations where you could drop off your ballots, so there's not one line.
Right.
Everyone was very nice and very courteous, no one was cutting in line to drop off their ballots or anything like that. So overall, I think that everyone, everyone was good with how it worked, but we can always improve on what we do.
Sure, right.
One thing I did not mention earlier, but now's a good time is with the end of Jim's tenure tomorrow, Max Close is, will be the temporary town clerk. Under state law, the assistant town clerk automatically becomes the acting town clerk with the departure of the town clerk. But we took the additional step of designating him the temporary town clerk and we sent notice to the Secretary of State's office this week, which is required under law anytime there's a change in town clerk. And so his term will begin tomorrow noon and will extend until a new town clerk is appointed this morning.
So anything you need, Max, as you guys.
Right. Jim, I do have a couple suggestions on the coveport, so I'll just email that to you.
Yeah, and then, and then, overall, I think there, it's just substance. The, the, the thing that mattered was the motions that passed the bylaws. That's really what we had to get in timely, within, I think it's a 10-day period of town meeting. But otherwise, it's just edits that we feel are important or that we want to have in there or that bad spelling.
Okay, very good. All right, moving on to item B, Board Commission and Committee Updates. Let's scroll into that.
This is a letter that's directed to me, I certainly never represented to the Arbor Day Foundation and I'm the mayor.
I thought that was way to get a paper.
Anyhow, this is, this is all pre-committee, I mean, they made this happen and they make it happen year after year. So while it's addressed to me, obviously, you know, we take no ownership of that or no credit. Well, it's addressed to to me, obviously, uh you know, we we take no ownership of that or no no credit, I should say. Uh but it's a great, you know, it's a it's a great designation and uh. It's something that we file paperwork every year, uh but again, the tree committee chair kind of hands us and we we review it, sign it and. Um so it's a, it's a good thing, I mean, like very well aware that continues to be renewed every year.
And and what does the application for that look like?
Uh initially, uh I think it was longer, it's it's a, it's four or five pages, they, there's certain things, there's certain qualitative things that you need. Uh in terms of uh, you know, in your bylaws, um and uh they they look at how much you budget for tree planting. And uh some of the activities that uh the tree committee needs in terms of uh distributing seedlings for plantings, those are all things that are. Kind of reported and and help make the town eligible. It's not something that just any town can go.
Yeah.
Apply for, there's definitely qualitative criteria that they look for, including your bylaws.
Alright, um. Are our special permit people here? Not yet, okay, um we're onto action items, A, reorganization of the select board.
I'm gonna do it again. I'm gonna nominate and hopefully request that Wendy be the chair once again. I hope we get a second here, Ross.
Second.
So no interest in in uh taking on them?
Not especially, and the reason is I think you do it so well. I couldn't do it at the level you do. And I'm just amazed at how well you do it. I know it's uh. Burdensome, cumbersome, timely, consuming for you. I feel bad that you do so much, but you do it so well. If you said no, I would do it very begrudgingly, but I don't. Catch you because I know you do it so much better, so I will leave it at that, hope you will.
Yes, I will, if that's your wish. I don't want to hog it if you want to be chair. Ross, would you like to be chair? Alright, so is that a motion?
That was a motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I'm gonna stand.
Oh wow, you didn't approve yours then?
Alright, so vice chair, I would nominate you, Chris. Could be vice chair, is that cool?
It is, but I'll just. For a second, and I guess I will explain it second. Because I'm a county clerk, which comes with the obligation of having to pre-review all minutes in advance. So even, somebody chuckled. Yeah, it's. Max sends me the minutes as clerk in advance when I make it into the packet. So sometimes even as terrible as there in the packet, I've already reviewed them as the clerk. It can take a bit of time, so.
It's not a requirement that the clerk does the minutes?
No, but it's been a procedure that I think is, otherwise we'd be sitting in these meetings for forty-five minutes to an hour trying to get through some of these minutes.
So what I might suggest is continue to do it because as vice chair, you really don't have that much. You see that light coming out of there?
I mean, so for the last year, I didn't have to do this.
Right.
Wow.
Too bad for you. It's just a suggestion, I don't, you know.
Go with T. Ross, I'd do it over the next year.
I don't think it's what he signed up for, especially on his first term, so I, if you want to go that way, I can still do it if.
Alright. Alright, all in favor?
So again, the motion was uh Chris as as vice, and that you made the motion, you seconded, okay, great.
Make the next one. Ross is a clerk, that's easy.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, great. So as Hank has noted in the memo, the other designations, um we have a select board member on the Fordham Housing Trust. CIC, CPC, Investment Policy Committee, um and then Whittier Tech working through. So, but we don't have to make those now, correct? Should we wait until June to?
Correct, I I actually would recommend waiting. I think it makes more sense when all of the committees are reappointed, but. I I like to bring it up here so that you remember that, but but I think it makes more sense to do it.
Two now gets at least the.
If you do it tonight, it's however you want to do it, but I would definitely would suggest make the term effective July one.
Right.
So, yeah.
I'm sorry, revisit it. I hate to revisit, we come back to things.
Sure.
Time, yeah, yeah. The only one that had the CIC, that was Rick's. And Ross was on CIC before from ThinkCom, so you would accept that, I would make a motion just to keep all the other positions as is.
Okay, I mean, we still have to assign liaisons.
That's later, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, alright.
So, Fordham Housing Capital Improvements, Community Preservation, Investment Policy. And Whittier, Penn Tuckett was done, so my motion keeps us all the same with the exception of capital improvements, which would be Ross.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Uh do we have? Now Rich is on, right?
Yeah.
Okay. The next item is a request for approval of special event permits for Uton Sports. Hi, Rich.
Hi, how are you?
Wow, thank you.
Thanks for having me on tonight, I appreciate it.
Sure.
These requests are a follow-up to um a previous request. We actually do three races um over the course of the year. We call it the three P challenge, and it's the the same race each time, uh so it's the same course that we. Um had submitted earlier, uh so the dates that we're asking for today are July twentieth and September twenty-eighth. Uh the races start and finish in Newburyport at eight AM. Uh they travel through both Newbury and West Newbury before returning to Newburyport and. Um both races end at eleven AM. Um I have sent in a a copy of the the course map. With the the last um application that we had uh discussed. I know uh there was a specific request uh to have the signage up in advance and we will do exactly that. Uh we do have signs uh announcing the the races upcoming and uh we actually had um new signs as a result of the last meeting. We had new signs that added the time of day. Uh our previous signs just said Sunday morning, it now says Sunday eight AM to eleven AM more specifically. So I hope that helps get us in the right direction, but I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Okay, no, that's great. Thank you for making that change in the signage.
Good question.
Sure.
On the form for the police, it says traffic control, key traffic warning locations, and it lists specific locations. Does that mean that there's going to be an officer at these locations? Because the first one says Turkey Hill and South Street with cruisers, and then the others just say Indian Hill and South. So does that mean there's actually an officer at these, or it just says key warning location, it doesn't say what the provision for that is? I have no idea what that means.
Hmm, do you know, Jim?
I would assume.
Under number five, keep it going down. Right there.
I would assume unless it was, unless he has officers on foot, which I doubt. Um maybe I would assume that would be the one location for the.
So you're only getting one police detail on the whole roof, or are you getting the five?
I think it's one with the main, with the main. Roof being right on South Street, that's the high-traffic area, so why are the other locations even listed? I don't know what that means, what it's indicative of. Rich, have you talked to Chief Boyer about that?
Yeah, we've um, I don't want to speak for him by any sense, but we've done this race for a number of years and we typically hire and pay for five. Individual details, so it's not a single officer, it's five different details. Uh I, so those locations that he cited are where there will be an officer. Uh and I have always been under the impression that there's a cruiser there as well. If it was.
It's on the town, we should identify what this means. Okay, so while we're on that, on your first race. On the twentieth, you've got five locations with those specified, but on the next one, you've got six. You add Rogers and Turkey Hill. Not sure why it's the exact same course, I didn't know what the.
Yeah, it is exactly the same course, you're correct. Um I would have to ask the police chief why there is a, an additional officer there. I don't know the answer to that.
My last question, I guess, to the town is, anybody verified there's no conflicts with other events in these locations on these dates? This so far, with this being so far in the future, these days, we think that we have, you know, I guess.
So is there a way for this to get put into the scheduling so that Caitlin is aware before?
Yeah, when when it's a, if it's approved, uh when it's approved, then we would um forward it to Caitlin to make sure she knows what.
Okay.
Great.
Any other questions?
Motion, make a motion to approve both, both of the event permits for July twentieth. And September twenty-eighth for Rich Morell with Uton Sports. Second.
You want to say pending resiliency detail or?
That will be a final amendment, thank you.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Rich.
Thanks so much, I appreciate the help.
Okay.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Will you set the follow-up motion with Jake Barner? Alright, next item is proposed draft letter to the MSBA regarding statement of interest for Whittier Regional Tech. Now we have Kevin Bo, our new representative of the Whittier School Committee here. Um, anything you want to add before we discuss this?
Uh no, uh other than I I think you guys are kind of ahead of me on this, so I'll sit back and. If I have comments.
Okay.
I'll try and say something.
Right, you don't have to.
Yeah, how shy I am.
Yeah.
Where's the other cattle law?
Alright. So this is, this is D-Day, right? We need to sign this.
I don't find anything wrong with it, I mean, it's fine. My question, I missed the last meeting, I had a previous engagement, Angus was at it. The cost of this is supposed to be two-point-five million, five hundred thousand from Whittier, five hundred thousand from Northern Essex, left one-twenty-five. But that number, the head of the pool, was going to be diminished because of Whittier component, uh they were going to use the previous data and updated.
Right.
Has there, was there any conversation, a discussion on that, where that's anticipated to go?
That that is anticipated, but the uh it it was discussed at the last meeting. Uh MSBA is adamant that the scope of the uh study has to include the current campus. They have said that it's going to be fine to adjust those numbers to inflation. Uh obviously, that's going to translate through to the cost of the study. Uh I think the two-and-a-half million total cost is still being used in order to be conservative, uh is my understanding. Uh I think it would be uh reasonable not with regard to, you know, whether or not to go forward with this letter, but I I think assuming this letter does go forward. Uh I think it makes, I did ask a question at the meeting as to what is the process to uh kind of, for the selection of the. Uh vendor that would be doing the study, and I think it's it's reasonable for. The uh town to have an interest in what is the scope of that study and make sure that that, the scope for the existing campus is as lean as possible. Uh while still meeting the MSBA requirements.
I didn't have any concerns with the letter signing to you.
No, I think it's, I think it's.
That's a huge step in the right direction. Massive.
Um alright, so we need to vote to approve it or?
I think the motion authorized Angus to sign the letter of commitment to move forward with the Whittier program and including the. Rewriting of the agreement eventually. Second.
Right, further discussion?
I just have a couple of things. So while I understand we need to, the towns need to allocate the one-point-five million. Uh upfront-ish, it's going to be divided over two years, the four years, yeah. So it's seven fifty divided by eleven, and we're going to be using the capital um formula as opposed to the operating formula. And I look forward to meeting, I guess, with Angus or maybe Chris or whoever to download all your stuff and um, you know. Upload it to me and and hopefully look forward to working with you guys to um get this project where it needs to be.
And there were, I I I'm looking through, I I see I didn't put it in tonight's packet, but it was in the last packet. Uh the superintendent had provided an estimated allocation of the the net cost, the one-and-a-half million, and how that would allocate across the eleven communities. Based on the capital formula, um so obviously, West Newbury is far less than one-eleventh because of, you know, where we are.
Yeah, I think it was in eighty-thousand-dollar range for the total of two years.
Two years, yeah.
So it wasn't significant for us. And that's at the full number, if it would be less.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Alright, the next item is consideration on the MVP grant application. I know we have some members here. This this will be a select for discussion, uh just to recap, I'll try to recap where we are on April third. Uh the part of the grant application brought to the select board to consider. And we had to vote on it then because it was due the next day. Uh there was some concern that the entire grant application wasn't available to review. Uh the reason the select board has to um approve any grant applications is because they do put a a demand on town resources. It's not just the money that's awarded, you have to also have to manage the grant. So at that point, we um, the majority of the board did vote to submit the grant application with the understanding we would follow up and look at. The demand of town resources that would entail. Um so two weeks later, at the next meeting. Angus provided some preliminary information about projected town resource demand on just the first task. And he had said he would have the full um analysis done at our um meeting tonight. We also ended up meeting on May first to kind of talk about this some more. Um I'd asked Angus to hold off on the staff analysis just so we could kind of get a hint on what the scope was. Uh coming out of that meeting, we agreed to meet um with the CCRC to try to find a way to narrow the scope with the intent of. Um kind of decreasing the demand on town staff resources. I met with the chair and then the entire board met with the CCRC last night. Uh coming out of that meeting, it seems like the CCRC is really committed to meeting the entire scope as proposed to fulfill what their objectives are. What I heard from this board was um maybe we ought to narrow scope to high priority locations instead of the entire road. So I think at this point, either we vote to withdraw the application or we vote to accept the application and plan on negotiating the scope. Um on award, according to Liz, that's something that that's an expected part of the process. So I think that's what we need to focus on. If we if we do want to stay the course and see if we're awarded the grant, what kind of guardrails are we going to put around? Um the scope and um and so forth when we get there, so is that a fair assessment, Chris, since you've been?
Yeah, and I think it's actually, considering where we are at this point in the process, we should have gotten this far down, I think it's a good option. I mean, it's a lot of money and most of the work needs to get done eventually. It may be in a schedule that's a little too aggressive for the town staff, but if once, if we hopefully get awarded, I'm assuming the town will. Will be awarded a significant portion of the grant, the select would maybe arrive from the. CCRC sits and negotiates the scope. Where the town staff can handle, by that time, we should be able to have hours associated with the task, so I think you could probably. Would avoid, I don't know, your thoughts on that, those are my thoughts.
I think before we have Angus or anybody calculate hours, we need to figure out what the scope is, I don't want, we'll be working on it if we're not going to end up changing the scope. Do either of you have any thoughts about whether to stay with doing the whole road or to take it in a phased approach, you know, starting with priority areas?
I always have consult, I need to go first.
And Ross, if you feel like, um I should have mentioned this at beginning of action items, if if you don't feel like you're up to speed on anything, it's perfectly fine to abstain. Throw that out there, not to say that you need to.
So as far as negotiating and or paring back the scope, is that, when you say the word scope, are you referring to? Like the work that's going to be performed, or are you talking about like the secondary parts of that? That scope that was laid out that is like uh community outreach and things, I mean, there's there's certain things that aren't negotiable, would that be a fair statement?
I'm not sure. I mean, there are certain things that were put into the grant to entice the state to award the grant, you know, some of the community engagement things. I don't know that they're non-negotiable, but um.
Because it, I guess one of my concerns would be that. The burden on town resources might be fairly constant. Irrespective of minor changes in the physical work being. Irrespective of minor changes in the physical work being performed. I don't know if that's true, but that's just something that, you know, if you limit the survey to a smaller portion, but you still have to do the same community outreach and the same submittals. Is the demand on resources going to be materially less? I don't know.
I mean, one thing I I kind of floated by Angus today is perhaps, I mean, there's some money left in the prior grant award. Maybe we hire a consultant to assist us in evaluating the scope and demand on town resources.
My suggestion is going to be negotiate the contract. See, we've got our 60 grand that the town voted. Hold another 50 out and use that time to hire a consultant to manage. A portion of the grant for us too. But if you got the other money, it's the same concept.
Well, no, I'm talking about before we get to the point of negotiating the scope. Yeah.
Okay.
Just.
I think it's be helpful too, once you, if we're successful, potentially the same. In advance, we have this money there.
There's a small amount that you're going to have to do something like that.
A question on Ross's thing, he said maybe not do the survey of the whole road. I think that'd be one of the things you probably would do, right, to establish your baseline. That probably has. For the dollars to town resources ratio of the lowest. So probably that would be, in my mind. One of the things you want to engage fully. It's maybe when you micro focus on the areas, maybe we look at the the three hot spots rather than. Every section down the road, every so many feet.
Yeah, I don't think we need to to decide that tonight. As long as we decide that we do want to move forward with the intention of. Kind of taking a look at the scope. I mean, I feel like the first thing is what is our objective? I think the CCRC's objective is to. Gather preliminary data from the entire road. In the event that something happens, then we can respond more quickly. Is that a fair assessment?
Among the objectives, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I I think as a board, we have decided that our objective as well, and if not, what is our objective? And I think that's what, you know, what we should determine the scope should be coming on that. But that doesn't have to be done tonight, I don't think, as long as. Whatever motion we make includes, you know, the intention to. Iron up scope question before we get to the point of negotiating with the state.
We were to reduce the limits of. The area that we're evaluating, could we take things farther in those areas? In other words, if we're limited to the three. Very problematic, you know, can we get to 25% design plans? As opposed to just conceptual plans for the whole thing?
We did have some discussions about that, both with the committee as well as with, I mean, really. Going back quite early in the fiscal year, but also more recently in kind of the last weeks before the grant was finalized. When we were talking with with different vendors who gave kind of input as to. Level of effort and budget numbers for kind of what had been scoped out. And it's very difficult going into a process like this to commit to achieving a level of engineering such as 25%. The reason being. It's a it's an iterative process and in order to hit that milestone. A decision would need to be made on a conceptual level of design early enough in that two-year window to allow. The the work to get to 25%. So I think you can aspire to kind of the highest level of. Engineering you can do within the the resource and within the timeframe. But I think it's it's. The feedback that we got from engineering vendors as well as people knowledgeable on this, including members of the committee. It's 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 difficult to prestate you're going to get there when sitting here today, we don't have a, you know, a great concept. It's it's a. It's a lot to get to 25% engineering. At a staff level, we we, and I think ever we would love to do that. But what we don't want to do is say we're going to get there and then fall short. I think it's safer to say we're going to, yeah. You know, our goal would be to take the design as far as we possibly can within the money, because I think that's. You know, the most tangible and needed thing that's going to take a lot of resources and a lot of expertise that we obviously don't possess. At a staff level, engineering and and.
I think the other thing I want to see at the point, and I think it's critical, is still what the impacts is going to be on town staff. At whatever level with success down the green. And in advance, you say a certain department has so many hours. That it's going to be required to accomplish. Maybe that's not available enough to say you can have a percentage of those. Hours and rest has to get contracted somehow. I think you've got to really be cognizant of the. Potential for overworking staff.
Well, it's not just it's not just overwork, it's it's the it's the quality control. I mean, if things are always being done.
Well, they do quality, that's why you're, that's why it's overwork, because.
Well.
If you want to do a lousy job, they could do it. Well, I'm just saying.
If every if every single thing is done under duress, mistakes will be made. I mean, I've been saying that for seven years and and I think our percentage rate is is quite good. We we, but you know, if you're doing 100 things a day and make three mistakes, that's. Statistically, pretty good outcome, but those three mistakes, like, and I've said for this whole seven years I've been here. We don't pick the mistakes we make. That's why they're mistakes. There are things that you're like, you know. So it's just when you're pushing things to the red line and you're you're driving people and an organization at that point. Mistakes will be made and so so it's it's not just a volume of work, it's the ability to to kind of sustain that. That quality control and make sure that things are getting the degree of rigor. And and not being done to meet a deadline for, you know. Whether that's for a public presentation or for a grant imposed deadline. I think two years is better, far better. Probably more than twice as good as one year. That was very, very difficult. And as we talked about, there were times that reports were put out for public consumption when there really hadn't been the bandwidth to even absorb them. I think that is problematic, but I think with the two-year scope we applied for, it doesn't need to be that way. But that's kind of what we're guarding against, you know, just this, you know, just in the context of all the other things that are ongoing.
Well, that's my concern.
The same the same level of rigor and the same level of kind of quality control.
Yeah, we've got an obligation in the rest of the town to keep moving forward on some of these other projects too. This can't be an all-time consuming.
And also baseline work that town staff have to do.
They all they all look like to consider that.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, so any thoughts on, do we want to make some kind of motion to formalize this or?
I think it's probably best to put it into a motion, not sure it's required.
I think that'd be a good idea, so that the our intention clear.
That's right, yeah. So you want to do that? Make a motion and we. Continue to pursue the grant. With the clear intention that the select board will negotiate the scope. At a level that is compatible with the availability of town staff to execute it at that time. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Something you might be interested in representing the select board on, I mean, when we get to that point, you should think about it.
Yeah.
We try to kind of divide up specialty areas and.
Yeah, okay, yeah, sure.
Alright, next items. Oh, select four minutes. Jim, are you sad? This is your last.
Oh, so sad.
He's going to, he can zoom in.
Alright, so on the first one. Page two of six, there's a note in here from Chris. To say check with Wendy, this was, it's actually about the MVP grant. So the sentence is, it says Wallace explained she had factored in staff time to the cost of the project overall, and that's not correct. I'm just struck at sense. Further down than that, this is a question for you, Chris, I guess, after we voted. Wasn't there a comment about that we could just not accept the grant if received? I thought that's why we started moving along this path. That's not reflected here. I don't know if Angus said it or you said it. I think it's important for it to be in here.
I think somebody said, I don't recall who said at the meeting, that you don't have to accept the grant. Yeah. And I know that was a concern for you, it definitely would be a bad look for the town, so I know. Was it that? I don't know exactly when that comment was made or where it was.
I think it was, that's why we had the follow-up meeting, so. I don't want Max to have to re-watch it. I'm not sure.
You can add it, I have no problem with that.
Yeah. Is that clear, Jim? On item G, this is just a question with the potential to withdraw. Is that how we ended up on that shared streets grant? That we went ahead with it and then you could decide to withdraw that?
I think, let's see, I think this was. Yeah. This was to do with the effect, the bid. Timeline was kind of out of sync with the the grant. I I just, I don't recall what what the what the. Whether the decision was to not withdraw or or I.
I thought we withdrew it.
I thought we withdrew it. I know we withdrew it after the meeting and I certainly wouldn't have done that without the board's. Okay, so I actually do not think that's written correctly.
I wonder if that should have gone up in the prior discussion.
Yeah, because we definitely communicated to the state and and it was very positive, they appreciated that we let them know. And I was very, you know, clear that we'd look forward to. Seating a grant that I program in the future for the time is better.
Okay. So maybe he does need to go back and. Anything else on that set of events? I have one other item on the bottom of page five. This is article 22. Library HBAC. The new thrust of the work is to evaluate indoor air quality concerns, not to remediate. So it's the sentence says encompass the new thrust of the work instead of to remediate poor quality of air conditions. It should be to evaluate indoor air quality concerns.
Minutes of April 3rd is amended.
Second, so is it customary for Ross to abstain if he goes in here?
So there's nothing stopping Ross from voting on any sets of minutes.
Okay.
It is customary, but it is by no means required.
Okay, your call. Okay. All in favor?
Did you approve all of this now?
No, just the first.
Alright, so moving on now to the April 8th. This was the meeting. With Mr. Sarkis and the community. Let's see, an item A. There's a sentence, let's see, one, two, five lines down, it says, she reminded the audience that the nap property was in the process of being developed. That that's not correct. I I think it should say she reminded the or. Informed the audience that the nap property was under a purchase and sale agreement with the developer, Mr. John Sarkis. And the next sentence, the back half of the lot is non-developable. It should be due to weapons instead of natural features. Three sentences later, at the end it says what the street plan could, it looks like could be like, there's missing a B there.
I'm sure, where was that?
That was the three sentences down and that next paragraph. The street plan could be like for MBTA overlay.
Yeah.
It's just missing a B, could be like.
Oh, yeah.
Next paragraph. It notes including low income units, I think we should use the correct terminology there. Let me just be affordable. Page two, about three quarters of the way down, there's a sentence that starts Cathy Ellis, it should be a C, okay. Next paragraph that says Sarkis expresses full intention to build in the MBTA style, I don't think you should say style. A build according to MBTA requirements or something like that. And the top of the next. Says my wild motion to accept the version of the bylaw presented at the planning board here, and that's actually incorrect.
Yeah.
We're not raising that. Alright, let's see if we.
Motion accept the minutes of April 8th as amended.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
April 14th. Paragraph A, last sentence. Should be focused of the library indoor air quality assessment. Instead of HNC replacement.
Except the minutes of April 14th is amended.
Second, all in favor? Next sentence, April 17th, on town manager updates, item A, assess the feasibility study will be conducted only in plans for joint campus. We just talked about that, right? It's not only on the joint campus.
It's technically not, they have to.
Should be existing.
Create the previous numbers, they don't have to do the full depth of the study, so you can change.
Top of page two, under item CA. Should be this status of consultant review of library indoor air quality. Just to see. Item FA, on the MVP grant application. It says work remains underway on the grant. That's not really accurate. You could just say. Work underway on evaluating the impacts of the grant should we receive or something like that. Day, last sentence. This was to be presented to the Whittier School Committee or the. Not Kentucky, so that the attorney letter came from Whittier. It's not really the Whittier School Committee, correct Angus? Letter that I sent.
Yeah, yeah, it came from, correct.
From Whittier itself, not the school committee.
That's right, yeah, your council.
Whittier Council. Did it go to Penn Tackett as well?
I I sent it, I copied that one. And the bottom, under HB, this is a question, I guess. I'm not entirely comfortable with the town account giving. Input on on the firms we solicited or, you know, or do you think she would be alright?
Better not.
Yeah, so we could just strike that. Maybe I shouldn't have asked you that question.
Was it asked the last?
Yeah, I know, but. Alright, that's it.
Make a motion of acceptance of April 17th as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next item, general discussion items. Alright, the first one is next steps on the mid-lawn bylaw compliance. So in the packet, there's a proposal for me about. What I think would be a good set of steps to take. I feel like it's pretty clear from the results of the town meeting, they're exounding no. And I think part of that is the process that we use. I feel like it's very top-down and I would like to see, I think it'd be more effective if we kind of build consensus with the community as we move along. I did look at other towns and and a lot of towns, we use surveys to get input from the community. They. They met with the abutters before putting the, um, property on the, um, warrant. And then they also formed a working group, which I floated at the planning board meeting last week, I think that's an effective way to, to try to build consensus. So the, the proposal that I have before the, like your input on, um, is basically to, to send a letter from the select board out to the community. Outlining what the requirements are, just, just the bare minimum requirements to satisfy the, um. MBTA community's law and then ask for input, um, just ideas on what they think would be appropriate. I think giving a ten-day window is probably reasonable, we don't want to give too much time, I think people, people will reply right away. And we're gonna be on a tight timeline anyway, so we can talk about specifics, but I think from that, I'd like to generate an email list so that we can keep those people who have demonstrated that they're interested, engaged in the process. Uh, the next step would be to just review the responses we, we received. I mean, there are some nuances to the requirements, so I think whoever, if, there's a working group ideally reviewing these, we'd have to go through and make sure they actually do comply with the requirements that we set out in the letter. I, I think we'll probably get a lot of the same properties identified, so if we come up with some kind of list of the number of people that suggested. Each property, um, and then have a, just a short public meeting to share those results and to get input from the community. Uh, I think, you know, from there, we can narrow it down, maybe to three to five choices, and I would recommend that we meet with both the owners and the abutters to those properties, either separately or together. Just to make them aware that we're considering it and to get any initial feedback, um, from them, just so that they're not, um, blind side by. Um, and then from that, we can send those results to MBPC, have them run through the compliance model, that's something the state puts out so that you can evaluate whether your property will in fact meet the requirements. So it's kind of a pre-screening to make sure what we submit to the state will satisfy their requirements. Uh, and then I think have another public meeting and just share those results with the community. See if there's any concerns there, if we have more than one location, we might want to have some kind of voting, you know, in a, um, in that format, in a public meeting. And then whatever was the top one that we want to submit to the state, I think to have on the town warrant, I think that has to be referred to the planning board. They can choose to have a public hearing or not, we just need to leave them enough time to do that. And then ideally, I think having a special town meeting just for that, you know, we just call a, a separate town meeting, maybe September, you know, before the fall town meeting. And that, um, if, you know, if this was not successful and still failed, then at least that gives us enough time to, to try to do something else together. So that's my general approach, I want to get feedback from the board, um, on that as well as the letter. And then I think we do have a little bit of time for our next item, if you want to take comments on, on that.
Well, that's three comments, I guess. But before you even jump into your letter, I guess my question is. What is the town's objective at this point in time? I mean. It did unfortunately fail, but I think the planning board. Made their best attempt to comply with the essence of the regulation, which was to allow for these units to be constructed. So that's still an option, is to find a parcel whether to be constructed or is the objective to just. Um, secure our, our opportunities to obtain grant funding. And that is to say, to find a parcel that you could put the zoning on, that we reasonably would know could not be built. I think you have to start there because everything else is. Balls apart from there, depending which pathway you go down, so. Somewhere along, I think that has to be decided. The next thing I think we need is, is tied into that, is the clarity from what the state. Will allow you to do, whether we can lay over Drake's Landing, it's been suggested. I hear you can do it, I hear you can't do it, it seems illogical to me, but if the state allows it. Maybe that's the path of least resistance you accomplish on, on a scenario like that. And then the third thing, obviously, is to find the one that is here, uh, planning board versus, uh, select board, who's taking the lead. I know legally, neither one can, I just think processing procedurally lies, that discussion has to be held and resolved.
Boris, the letter that you had drafted, so I'm reading the sentence where it says, we also heard that, oh, I'm sorry, no, uh. The line that was looking at is, our takeaway from the no vote at the recent spring town meetings, that the location of the overlay district should not be a property that's likely to be developed. Which I, I did hear that, it was, it was my impression that it was more. Disinterest in naps and, and, uh, un, and, and, and undevelopable property was just the only alternative that they could think of. But was that? That, that's not wholly. Well, it's not really a plausible solution, right, so I, I think, right?
What is not plausible?
Just putting it on some random parcel that would never be developed.
Well, it has to be the, the, the requirements as laid out below.
Right, okay.
Angus, I mean, Ian Burns from the MBPC stood up at a public meeting and said, you can't put it on a developed property.
My question, is he correct? I mean, he's not the attorney general, they could kick, you could do that. The attorney general.
Angus also spoke with people from the state, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, this is a, a really nuanced issue, I, and I did, yeah, we had a, a remote meeting with the state, uh, about two months ago. I asked them that question absolutely point-blank, uh, there were two, two people from HLC on there, and I said, um. You know, we're, we're, anyhow, I, I framed the question and, and they said that there's nothing in the regs that, that prevents. Placing the overlay on an existing developed parcel that is unlikely to be developed. That's a fact, I was told that, however. I, I remain skeptical that, you know, I think that the approach that you set out with the compliance model is so important. Because the state is not going to look at anything until it's gone through the compliance model, which is, uh. You know, a pretty intensive Excel-based work, workbook with GIS that's backing out, you know, obvious things like latins and different things. But they won't, the state will not formally evaluate it until it's gone through the compliance model, which, uh, the good news on that, MBPC does say they've done so many of these at this point, that they can do that, they can turn around. Like, let's say we sent them a site, they, they told us it, it wouldn't take them more than a few hours of staff time and they could probably turn it around within a day or two. So if we sent them a site, they could send it back, we would then have something we could.
Or we just do a test site, Drake's Landing right now, not with the intent that it goes anywhere, see what the response is, we can, we know it's, if it's a valid option or not at that point.
Yeah, I think we, we would, uh, you know, the state does give themselves ninety days, uh, we do not think in practice they would take ninety days.
I'm not saying go to the state, I'm saying let's see what MVP comes up with first.
Yeah, we, we could.
If they outright reject it, we know playing the fool's game, if they say it works, then you can consider if that's the one you want to go to the state, if you've already made that.
Yeah, I do not think that if it meets the compliance model, it, it, and this is just based on twenty-five years of working with this particular agency. They're known to be. There's a reason, in my opinion, that they make things vague, because they want to leave themselves some subjective ability to make. Qualitative judgment calls, and I do think, and you know, I'd be very concerned about the exact sentence that, that Ross cited. Uh, I would not recommend putting that out there.
Yeah, that should actually Ian flag that, um, and I, I think I must have sent you the wrong version.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's, he said, while that's true, you don't want to like put a red flag on it, so on that.
Yeah, so even if something kind of survives the compliance model, I, you know, I just, I don't think, you know, until you have the state saying, yes, that's going to be an eligible location. You can't count your chickens, I think.
That's a simple way to, to see the threshold you have to overcome.
But why not come up with two or three?
You can do that in the interim, right now, you can pick up the phone, call Merrimack Valley.
I don't know, if we're gonna set out a process that engages the public, let's engage the public, I mean, it's not, it's only gonna take ten days to do this. I mean, I, I really feel committed that this needs to be a different process and I need to let them participate in it.
You don't know what the process is going to be if you don't know what the criteria are.
So these are the criti- criteria, this is straight from the regs. So, I mean.
And one, one thing that I, I don't think people have fully considered with the draft of Drake's Landing specifically, is that. The perimeter of that site is subject to a conservation restriction, that would obviously be categorically excluded, uh, the rights of way and, that's private rights of way are excluded. So once you back that out. The acreage, and I don't know what that calculation is, but it's, it's a, it's a significant subset of the total site acreage when you back up a CR.
I'm just using that as a theoretical.
No, I understand, but that specific one has come up so many times in meetings.
Right, that's why it's.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know why my, my map doesn't list the, um, it lists the whole parcel, it doesn't list like the individual, I mean, but people own them, right? Why is it still listed as?
Well, all the land is in common ownership, it's.
Class, that's one ownership that's.
You know, yeah, there's not several laws.
Flies, yeah.
Chris, I, I don't necessarily, um, disagree with doing the test, just because like. The way I'm looking at it is like, there may be some developed parcels where you could look at it and say, okay, if they're to demolish what's there, you could. Probably afford to build an MBTA community there and it would offset the costs of demolition. But looking at a parcel like Drake's Landing, that's very well-developed, I can't, it doesn't seem to me like. So there's probably a, a spectrum of what they would allow for developed parcels and maybe we would just learn something, feasibility.
Logically to me, if I'm the state and you submit that, I'm gonna kick it right back at you, because there's no genuine intent.
Right.
You can build out the housing as the state is wanting you to do. But we've been told that it's. An agreeable option for the state, so let's take it to the first level, if Merrimack Valley can do it in a few hours. We're gonna know if this kind of option is even viable to consider, it takes one thing off your plate.
But then you still have to come up with another option, in case that's not viable against the state.
Run parallel pass, I don't, I'll see.
Yeah.
I like the process that you made, I was just thinking that kind of, behind the scenes, we could just do a test submission, but I, outside of that concept, I, I like the process that you made up.
Chris, to answer your question, I, I feel like we, our objective is to comply, that's, that's all I feel like our objective could be. So. I don't think we need to meet the intent or the spirit of the law, I think we just need to comply with the law, that, that's my.
So that would then beg the question, why not try a parcel like Drake's Landing first? The simplest option.
Because we won't be guaranteed that that will pass, I, I would rather have two or three that represent maybe the range of what would be might pass and, you know, then at least that way we're not, we're doing, you know, iteration after.
See, there are multiple parcels in town that would be on, and the next obvious one that's been suggested is Dunn's. We've got potentially mountains, the problem with all those parcels is there is a high likelihood they will be built at some point. And all you're gonna do with this process is irritate a whole nother neighborhood of, of abutters.
There's also more than those three parcels, the town is full of parcels that are bigger than five point eight acres.
Right, but once they become potentially buildable, there's gonna be a lot of resistance, we know that.
It's not, it's a big parcel, that might not be the case. I, I don't know, I think you'd be surprised at what people come up with, and I think we gotta give people the opportunity so that they're, you know, invested in the process. Uh, what was your second question? What was the objective? Oh, whether or not Drake's Landing, in fact, so I guess.
Well, that, that kind of, uh. False initiative, that is genuinely allowable, I mean, did the state deliberately create a loophole? I don't know, I think without knowing whether it was legitimate.
I don't think we're gonna get a straight answer, though, it sounds like Angus asked the state.
Well, the closest straight answer would be going to Merrimack Valley Planning.
And they were in total.
Yeah, and they did in the abstract say it's, there's nothing in the regs that disallows, so that, that they said, but in terms of the specifics of a site, does it pass the straight face test? Uh, I, I just, I, you know, and I don't know, because we haven't been through, but, uh.
But just as one random parcel picked, that'd have to be Drake's Landing, pick another one that's got restrictions and see if that concept flies at the very first level.
Okay. So what, what is the thought about having a working group? I mean, I, I think that this, the process I've laid out would be primarily town staff, um, but it would be good to have somebody from the planning boards and the select board is kind of the. The go-between to. Participate in, I think that's about a good approach. Or do we just want to have town staff work on it and report to?
I, I really like the working group approach, uh, there is obviously some overhead associated with posting and minutes, but I think, I mean, you, you know, I'm sitting here taking notes. Like, it's not, it's not, you know, for something of this importance, it's, it's absolutely critical that, uh, you know, everything happened in a way that's completely transparent, visible. And, uh, I think posted meetings and something people can, um, listen in and on or, or attend, I think is, is, is gonna be really, really important. So I, I think a working group comprised of a select board member, a planning board member and some number of staff, I think would be, uh, you know, and with, with. Broad communication that this, these meetings are taking place, people can attend, they can listen, they can read the minutes after the fact. I think it's gonna be really important on, on what is a fairly compressed timeline.
I mean, if we took that approach, then we don't have to have separate public meetings as I've laid out, it could just be the working group meeting, you know, with enough publicity, perhaps. What would you think about having a resident be part of the working group, if it's gonna be a five-person group?
Well, Angus, the town staff, so you've got select board, planning board, Angus, I would assume trainer.
Yeah, and then so a fifth person could be a resident.
Who makes that decision?
Yeah, we could, or. Just putting it out there, you don't have to decide anything tonight, but, um. I mean, I, I would like to send this letter out as soon as possible so we can get the process rolling, so if you do have specific comments. I mean, one thing that, that is kind of still confusing to me, Angus, is the five acre minimum, so, um. I mean, five point eight is the number that's been in all the information, because that's fifteen units per acre. But the whole minimum contiguous, I think, is, so we may want to revisit that sentence, just to make sure that it's cleared everybody.
Yeah, I do think there are a couple of things that I think could be clarified on this, so. But that did not change the intent of what you said, but, um, that it could be, right now, as written, could be written two, two different ways.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, probably good to, to put in a hyperlink, uh, with something to this, to the state where obviously, I mean, there's only so much you can say, say in a. One-page letter or a two-page letter, and if that, for those people who do want to. Kind of really dig into the, the statute, the regs, the guidance, uh, that's all there, it's all available.
Alright, so you both are okay, if we make some comments. Or by here, just make a comment, or anybody online, if you could just raise your hand. Anybody in the audience want to make a comment?
Have you gotten? Um, trying to get a, just a quick question, yeah? Have you? Been able to find other towns in the state? That have been able to comply using that definition of buildable but not available? For example, more than over. I've been told, use Texas King of Pocket Basket as an area where that type of construction could be done. But at the moment, it's not available, you know, if that's true. Then that would support what Angus suspected Mr. Wallace's question about the intent versus the compliance issue.
Yeah. Yeah, we have not done any work on this yet, that, that would be.
So that could be something that, yeah, people in, in the community who try to contact individuals in, in those towns. And find out, the ones that had met compliance, especially recently, and, um, find out. What approach they took, so we could verify whether that is indeed a viable method of being compliant.
Yeah, so I think the, the town staff would be the ones that if there was. Communities, I would, I would look to the town planner and town manager to do that. I mean, my intention was to have the community help identify parcels.
Right.
Um, so, but that's definitely, we need to, I, I think.
That would be a helpful thing in identifying the parcel.
Yeah.
And, and just for the record, we did, I did ask Tom kind of look into that in the weeks leading up to town meeting, and she did send me an email with, with, uh, some examples. Uh, that hasn't been probably circulated, because with all the information that was shared in the run-up to town meeting, if, if, you know. Didn't want to, you know, but create confusion, but there is a lot of, uh, there, there are ample examples. I looked at, at them, uh. In at least a couple of instances, uh, they were, uh, overlays over existing developed areas where the underlying zoning already allows significant density. Uh, those, I don't think would be analogous to anything here, but yes, that, we're, we're aware of the market basket example, uh, we haven't dealt into the details on that. I think that's something a working group could really look, uh. At, at the specifics as well as exactly where they are in the process, uh, cause just, just as something's been brought to town meeting, you know. Because just just because something's been brought to town meeting, you know, it is really where has the state approved it? I mean, that's what we that's what we wanna know. And where we're in town meeting season and a lot of towns in our kind of small-town category are are on the same timeline we are. I think there are a lot of these that were brought to spring town meetings, so even if they've been voted, it's not even necessarily, you know, they've been approved. So but that's all stuff that, you know, that would be researched further and I think one nice thing about having like a working group that's comprised of both the boards. You know, we could do something similar to the library, one with a separate page, start posting information there. Obviously, there's an existing page on the MBTA initiative that's that's got enormous amount of information that the current and former planning staff, you know, put an enormous amount of time putting a lot out there. You know, we we do sometimes wonder how much people actually, I mean, we put a lot of staff time into putting a lot of stuff on the website, and we wondered, do people like look at it? Because if not, it's a waste of our time.
No.
But but we would do the same thing with with, I mean, regardless of whether it's a working group or not, we're gonna do that, so.
Any other comments before we move on? So to your final question, Chris, the planning board.
And have working groups, I guess. We'll take care of that.
Other comments you want to make on that?
No, good.
Okay, move on to the next item. So we.
Well, actually, so just with the, obviously, the planning board's got this on their agenda Tuesday. So with this tonight's direction, obviously, we'll communicate that to them and, you know, hopefully get alignment on Tuesday for this idea.
And what if we don't get alignment?
I I mean, I guess that's part of why I bring it up, just because we are on a short timeline and, you know, we need to be kind of making progress on this weekend regal. So I think, you know, this board set the direction, finalized the letter, get it circulated. So by instead, the discussion, the the public input will be solicited in the near term before Tuesday. So kind of the the ball will already be rolling.
So you can send the letter out?
Is that, is that, well, that's part of why I bring it up.
Yeah, that that was my intent.
That was kind of my takeaway from what you said.
But are you saying we better wait until?
No, no, no.
All right, all right. Chris and Ross, are you comfortable with that approach? All right. So we have Bray Hill on for seven forty-five.
Yeah, I had told one resident who'd asked, it would probably be not before seven forty-five.
Okay, I guess.
Way way ahead of time, you know, so we're, I thought we might be.
All right, so we'll just skip over that for now. The next item is the GAR Library Indoor Air Quality Assessment. So if you recall, this was, we had requested a PINCOM reserve fund transfer to cover this work. The report is in the packet. And air quality, industrial hygienist firm came in and evaluated the air quality. They did long-term monitoring of several different parameters, including mold and VOCs and particulates. This is standard suite of parameters that you look for. He also did an assessment of the HVAC system. And. I mean, the the outcome of that was that the air quality conditions in the library were consistent with other public buildings such as libraries. That nothing was black that was out of the ordinary. They also disagreed with the DTH assessment in two thousand nineteen that the air quality, that the air handling units were oversized for the zone that's causing the issues, which isn't the children's room. So their recommendation is that if you're not having any moisture buildup problems, to not look into replacing those units, especially given that we're contemplating renovating the library and perhaps we don't need, we don't know exactly what capacity we need. I feel like that that issue's been resolved for now. I met with the board of library trustees last night and shared the results of the report. Even though additional testing is not warranted based on the results of the first round, they said they can do a more in-depth vaulted organic compound test. Some people are sensitive to compounds, even if it's within normal limits, so they can do this suite of advanced testing. It takes four to six hours to do it, and the library trustees agreed that they would pay for that since the town paid for the first round. So that's where we stand with that. They're they're, they would like to do it on the Tuesday after Memorial Day because the library will have been closed for four days. So the air quality in there, you know, there'll be no fresh air they introduce, so it'd kind of be a worst-case scenario. So that's the plan going forward on that. Questions on that, or it's not really our initiative, but just to keep you up to date. That was one of the one articles was to replace the HVAC.
Just a quick question. I have not had a chance to brief Brian on this.
I copied him on the course.
Oh, good, okay, okay. But yeah, specifically on the the schedule for the work, I'll just.
No, I think that was just decided, I guess it was Tuesday night.
Okay, all right, I'll I'll, I made a note to.
Yeah, I need to confirm that the company can actually complete that thing, yeah. The lobby, they're also talking about, so it's one zone that's causing the issues because when that zone is blocked off, nobody has any symptoms. So right now, it's blocked off. The the challenge is you can't have it blocked off all summer. It's gonna be too hot in there. So the trustees also authorized the purchase of two-window air conditioning units so they could keep that zone blocked off, but make it comfortable during the summer while they try to sort out with the hotness. All right, let's move on to scope and approach for the fire department study.
So we've been, I put out a query and a couple of lists, listservs, and there we've got a couple of sample scopes from two towns in Western Mass that I think are good, kind of raw material scoping this. As I noted in the correspondence in the packet, they're more on the organizational management staffing, which is definitely part of what we wanna cover. But we also wanna look at, you know, fleet and, you know, physical facilities and that kind of thing. So that's gonna take some time to to scope, and we wanna get that right. So I just wanted to kind of keep the board apprised that where the funding had been approved at town meeting. You know, whereas we're taking the initial steps toward, you know, what I'd like to kind of get some discussion tonight of what you would envision. The board was was clear in the run-up to the warrant article, then, you know, sponsored by the select board, even though it was initiated by the the fire department. So I I wanna understand kind of what we should be expecting in terms of board's involvement or oversight of the scoping, because that's obviously gonna be totally essential in terms of, you know, making sure the report is, you know, answers the questions that you have and that the board of fire engineers have. So I didn't know if we should be working toward a joint meeting or if we wanna handle it more informally between myself and Chief Dwyer. We give periodic updates until we have a scope that, I mean, ideally, I I'm just thinking out loud, but ideally, I think we'd have a scope that both fire engineers and the select board felt were fully responsive to the questions that you you both may have.
Yeah, what were you two saying? Do you wanna be involved as it's developed or just kind of when it gets to a draft stage for you?
I don't need to be involved at this point. I don't have enough to offer them to make a difference. No, I think we need to find out what direction it's going. I think there's anticipations on one side, I'm not sure. I just wanna get up to speed where it's going. We keep hearing bits and pieces of it. We need the complete picture. I'm happy with you and the chief right now.
One thing that might be helpful would be if if both this board, perhaps not tonight, but at a future meeting, as well as the the board of fire engineers was invited to just come up with a list of questions of what you would hope this study would address. And that way, when Dwyer and I are putting together a scope, we can strive to get something that's gonna be responsive to at least most of those questions. You know, without knowing what the questions are, you know, I can't tell you we'll be able to get them all answered within the budget, you know, because we don't know what the, you know. But I I think that would be a good place to start. I I know certainly some of the questions that that they're that they have just from the years of, you know, working together. You know, daytime coverage or and and some of the questions that come up just in general discussions about need for ladder trucks or need for guard street station. There there's specific questions that kind of come up piecemeal. And I think over the over the next several weeks or more, I think, you know, I I would look to kind of myself and Dwyer to kind of aggregate what we've heard. But I think if if you wanna put on a future agenda, and I'll talk to Dwyer about whether the fire engineers could put on a upcoming agenda for them to kind of brainstorm if they haven't already, then they already have a list of questions, but.
Did you ever see the scope that Cooper?
I did.
You did, oh.
Yep.
Was that circulated? I may have seen.
No, if it was, it was before your time. It was it was something that was brought to me in, I wanna say, twenty nineteen. And at the time, I I do recall, I I'm pretty sure, I I definitely would have shared it with the chair at the time. I don't remember if that was Archie or or Rick or who was chair at that time, but in all likelihood, it probably found its way into a packet because we're pretty good about putting things in. We didn't go anywhere. It was kind of, I remember, I seem to recall it, it was kind of brought to me in a February or March, by which point that cycle of funding had already kind of passed. And, you know, I think Dwyer and I felt it was a great idea, just not the right time. And so it was something we kind of put on a list for the future, and then this cycle was was where it felt like the right time in terms of organizational kind of objectives and, you know, bandwidth or some things happens. But but it's something that's, its time is, you know, has come, so. It's not something, it would have been before your.
If you can get.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, I'll send it around. And I'll send around the others that are referenced in my in my email. I think it was Amherst and Altretown, I believe, were the two communities.
Anything else on that? Our next item is review of draft roadway acceptance procedures and policy.
So my intent putting this on isn't so much to get into the details of it, because just to be frank, I haven't reviewed the details. I can tell you as, you know, like, it's very typical and recommended for a community to have clear procedures set out. Fourth Street acceptance is one of the kind of odd little gaps we have here in West Newbury. It's very, very important that it be handled properly, that there be clear kind of clarity is the responsibility of each step of the process. Guess there's important roles for multiple town offices to play, as well as whether it's being brought forward by a developer closing out subdivision road or potentially a number of residents looking to bring a road forward for acceptance. You know, who's the quarterback and what are the various steps in the process? There's there's significant documentation required, both in terms of, you know, the the street acceptance plan, the survey plan, as well as there's, you know, legal documents or, you know, easements or the ownership, you know, deeds that have to be drawn up at town council. It's it's a lot, there's a lot, and there's a lot of reasons you can go wrong. So this is something Katrina, on her own initiative, had kind of brought to me, and I said, absolutely, like, in my opinion, we we definitely ought to be working toward this. We now know and have clarified that this is something that can be adopted as a policy. It doesn't need a bylaw, so that's great. That means it's something that could be voted by this board or, and it real, I think it ought to be by this board as the roadway commissioners. So I think my intent putting it on tonight is basically to make you aware this is a thing. I don't think it needs to take, you know, dozens and dozens of hours, but it it's, it's, you know, just like everything, it takes time. You know, we need to have the right people involved, and we don't wanna, I think I could safely speak for the board, we don't wanna just take some good template and at pace. We wanna make sure it really, you know, makes works for us, although so much of this is set out in state law. It's really just trying to communicate it clearly to town staff who have a role in this, including the town clerk's office, there's an important role in this. And whomever may be initiating, a developer. So for instance, we've heard, you know, there's definitely, I believe, an intent of the developer to bring forward major boy drive for acceptance at the fall town meeting. Sitting here today, we, you know, all we can point to is this kind of guide that KP Law puts out or point them to the statute. There's nothing locally adopted that says these are the steps you need to follow. These are the timelines you need to meet. These are the things, assuming, you know, if something is voted, things have to be put to record with registry. We're gonna have a certain amount of time after the vote, as you as you probably recall, you know, back in two thousand six, there was a street that was accepted. It was not timely recorded. We had to bring it forward again in twenty twenty, you know. So I think it's a good initiative. I think we can, my my thought would be, I'd like to continue to work with Katrina to bring something forward, get Butch's input, get Dwyer's input. And when we think we have something ready for prime time, bring it forward, we'd get the planning board's input. So, you know, my goal would be by mid to late summer, at the latest, to have something before you for action, so.
So would they be coming to the fall town meeting, the street acceptance?
Well, that's the discussion, but, you know, will it be ready? That's really not our problem.
But how would you handle it if if something was brought forward? You just say, we're not, you can't bring it?
No, well, that that is, that's board's prerogative. When I worked in the town of Westford, they they had a longstanding policy that they were not accepting new public roads, and they were, the select board did. And so even if it was built to town standard and this, you know, I was working in the land use, you know, and and there was a lot of unhappy developers and a lot of unhappy residents, but they had reasons to, you know, and and they were consistent. There is no, you know, the select board controls the warrant, so zone can petition to get something on for public acceptance, but it's up to the board as to whether that's brought forward. I do think it's it's the right thing to do and it's fair for a community to be clear in setting out the process that it expects people to follow. Whether the town wants to accept a road is really ultimately up to the legislative body, but it's up to this board to even break forward the question.
Yeah, but in the past, I'm thinking of Barbary Lane, thinking of Cortland. There was a process in place. I don't know if it was a bylaw or where it came from, but we knew that there were certain steps which are pretty much the ones iterated in this document.
Yep.
And obviously, there was some missteps, maybe two. And we were told at one point, no, the town meeting does not have to accept it. And remember, this is going back in a different lifetime, at one of them, I suggested we not accept it, and there was an uproar. People felt that the road is built to the standards anticipated, and there are taxpayers and houses on those roads. The town has an obligation to accept it, which I generally agree with. I mean, I would prefer the town didn't accept these roads, but if that's the expectation, you should. And and the slight problem that evolves is when they apply for these roadways, they're generally these dead-end lollipop streets. They ask for waivers. The one, first one that always comes to mind is they wanna do on-top curbing instead of granite curbing, which was in the regs. I don't know if the regs have changed. And so when the town accepts these, they have, they're accepting the road that might not be at the same standard that Butch would build or would like to have built. So the process evolves over three, four, five, six years of a permanent application. And when it gets to the acceptance of the road, and the abuddas have a reasonable expectation to think you should accept it. So I think if if this is what is going to be the process, I think from the very beginning, the expectation has to be set fairly high to be a standard that the road will accept.
So Angus, this document, this is Katrina's proposal for West Newbury? It wasn't clear. I mean, these citations are that, those from state laws?
Yeah, yeah, they're from state law. It's an initial, it's an initial cut out, so.
Okay, but it's not just a summary of those subsections. It's her proposal for West Newbury?
Correct, yeah, and I I believe she modeled it on what they had in Middleton, and something she had worked with in her prior position. So I just, I mean, especially where we're in a context of goal-setting and looking ahead.
Yeah.
It is something that I wanted to at least kind of take your temperature. Is this, is this something you feel is a legitimate? I mean, it's obviously legitimate. Is this a good use of staff time where, you know, we're so constrained, it's not been on any list? It is something I think is is very important. I I don't think it needs to take a hundred hours. It will take, you know, some couple of dozen hours to get something that's that's ready for prime time. I I think it's a good use of time. And it's the kind of, you know, it's like we just push these things forward as, you know, in the few minutes here and there that we have, but I didn't wanna. Even if here and there that we have, but I didn't want to, you know, have her kind of keep going full speed ahead and bring something to this board and. You know, eight or twelve weeks for vote, and you're like. Why aren't you even working on this? Like, you never even talk to them, so.
Yeah.
It's it's uh.
Well, it sounds like it's going to be before, so it'll be like or not.
It will, yeah.
So, I mean, do you feel like it's a good use of staff time? Ross and her.
Yeah, seems to be very surprised we don't have one already.
It is surprising.
Needs to be done.
I I was very surprised uh.
Is this going to unduly raise the bar for Grand Hill Paris?
The, I believe the the, I I don't think. The current thinking is to look toward that for public acceptance. It's more the statute that. If enacted by, if adopted by the voters, would authorize the town to do some amount of. Uh snow and ice operations, but not take responsibility for, for instance, future reconstruction.
Yeah, so we've kind of changed course.
But that is still an option.
It is.
We raised the bar, and that's.
Oh, sure.
From the beginning, to raise that up to road standard is probably not feasible for the.
All right, item F, review of draft revisions to the housing production plan. So I know you're not looking for new revisions, just a response to the revisions that have been made.
Yeah, I mean, if you find something glaring, I don't want to, I don't want to shut down that discussion, but obviously, we've been at this for a while. We're we're trying to. Get this over the finish line. It was, I I personally was a bit dismayed to get the response we got from the state.
Right.
Uh where I think they're just moving the goalposts. That's very typical of this agency. And uh, you know, I would kind of like to get it done, and we can move forward. Uh I think it's, it at some point becomes a distraction.
Yeah.
Uh so I I I would encourage you to focus on kind of what's changed. But, you know, if you see something, at the end of the day, you're going to be asked a vote to endorse it, so if you see an issue, I don't want to, you know, shut that down, but. Uh this was sent to the Affordable Housing Trust, or did I send it? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I dig it, and it's on for Tuesday. The planning board's been asked to provide input on the draft uh revisions as well.
So I had um a question for you. It's on page twenty eight. It's the discussion of the Mullen property feasibility study.
Yeah.
I think we were asked to not publicize that.
Yes, yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, I took, that's a good point.
I think just without their permission, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, I think they were talking in terms of like press releases and those kinds of things, but that's a, that's a very important to be clarified.
You say you're asked not to publicize that by who?
By the grantor.
By the housing partnership. Yeah, and I I did, I took that to mean things like a press release or a, or, you know, that kind of thing, but but you are correct that the. Contract does say. To not publicize it, so, yeah, that crossed my mind.
So that's how they funded the study?
They're funding the study, yeah.
Um so I do have, just, I I think we should consider on the housing site list. First of all, I don't know why All Saints Church property is on here. I I made that comment before, and I don't know whether it was just disregarded or.
I I don't think so. It was probably just overlooked.
Yeah, I mean, that's not been in any prior documentation. I know that's of interest to me on particular.
Okay, to your own.
Uh page thirty three of the document.
Um beyond that, though, um. Did we just identify one eighty seven main and three seventeen main as an affordable unit today? I mean, those were not on prior housing production, were they?
No, they were not.
Yeah, so I just feel like we need to be a little bit. Um more thoughtful about that. Um.
I do remember in in some of the working meetings we had with MBPC, uh which is our consultant on this, uh. They were telling us that the state is not going to accept it unless you identify specific properties. So where a lot of this work was going on concurrently with the MBTA, uh I'm certain that's where those. Why those three sites are on there.
Yeah.
Uh but that, I guess if you're looking at anything new, that would be, that single table would be a good thing to look at.
Yeah, I also think, I mean, one of the requirements for a municipal property to be considered under MBTA is that it's mentioned in the housing production plan. So maybe we want to put a beige pool property in here, you know, not all of it is under lease or under CR. There's a fairly big section behind the school, ten acres or so that. And if one of the future uses of that property might be senior housing, you know, maybe that that should be on. I can't really think of any other municipally owned, unless you want to put it down on here.
Pretty much really not want to put down on there.
What's that?
I would not want to see done on there. I think it's a parcel that needs to have. A significant thoughtful discussion, but we're instantly encouraged.
Well, I guess the other question that Angus raises in these comments is we were asked to identify a safe site of affordability. We don't do it now, we'll have to do it at some point. The problem with that, though, is that the affordability is only twenty five percent of affordability, whereas if we develop it as an affordable housing site. Um it could be much higher. So just let me talk.
It's looking to get higher, couldn't you?
No, it's twenty five percent.
Yeah, in a forty B, yeah.
The town can't change negotiating any of that.
Uh, I mean, you 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 can try, but it's. Likely not going to be successful, because uh the uh, what the state, which is, you know. Looks for is whether the conditions make the pro- render the project uneconomic, is kind of the the term of art, and so. If the developer is not favorable to that, and they show a pro forma to the state saying that. Uh twenty five percent is the maximum they can do, and any more is going to make it feasible for financing. In my experience, over twenty five years with this stuff, is the the state's going to be very deferential to what the developer says. So if there's a. If there's a negotiated forty B where the developers are amenable to.
That's what I'm thinking, and the town owns the land, so you should be able to reduce the cost and negotiate.
That's a difference, that's a whole different situation. Yeah, I hadn't understood that. That's what you meant. Yeah, that's a whole different situation, because at that point, the town. Isn't just the permit granting entity, it's the, it's the landowner that can impose any condition.
Well, it puts an advantage on the developer, which should be compensated in some fashion on the development, so I.
Yeah, the town of Westford, uh they they approved a hundred percent of affordable project of town meeting. Shortly before I started working there, I was very involved with the, you know, overseeing the buildout and the uh sale of those units, uh but. Yeah, so I had.
But that's not forty B, though.
It was not under forty B. That was the permitting vehicle, yeah.
I just, I don't want to do anything that um. Impacts the current study on the Mullen property. Yeah, that's my only concern, if they have something in mind. I mean, how, when they say you have to come back later and identify, what what does that mean, like next year or?
Uh, I would think any time in the in the five year life of the plan, yeah. So so that might be a a smart decision is to just. Say, uh modify it once, once something becomes. Now, I I I think I've always felt it's asking a lot of communities to stick their neck out and pick a site.
It's like inviting, yeah.
It's it's uh, so I I think that approach would be totally reasonable.
So do you think we should leave the Dunn property on there, three seventeen Main Street?
That's a different time you're talking.
Yes, yeah.
You know what I could do as a follow up to this is is just uh put into a, you know, if this was on, let's say, for two weeks from tonight, put in the actual. There's regulations that cover the housing production plans, and without going back and rereading those, I'm not sure. If the comments that we got from the state uh are kind of moving the goalposts, like, I I think we need to comply with. Those regs, but does it specifically say we have to identify a specific sites? Because if it doesn't, I don't think we should go further than we have to go.
Yeah, yeah. Uh but given that the planning board is voting on this on Tuesday, if we're, we're going to suggest changes, this table, it seems like. We should do that tonight. Um otherwise, it would have to come back to us and then back to the planning board again.
Yeah, yeah, it's a kind of a.
Yeah.
Clunky process.
Yeah. Um, do you have any strong feelings about this? Is this something that you are comfortable with Angus and I sorting out or?
I'm with that as first, well, not the first time. This document's been before us too many times.
Yeah.
Um, when we went to vote it, I think at the time, it's more of a courtesy vote. The implication's going negligible, because like, there's a lot in the document that I don't agree with, so I would say the two get together and fill in the blanks at this point. Very comfortable with that.
Yeah, if I could just kind of jump on on that a little bit, because I I would agree with that. You you and I may. There may be different sections that you or I don't agree, don't make in this, but but one thing that's always bothered me about this framework for. As long as I've been doing this kind of work is uh, it's, the state is so prescriptive on saying that you shall show that you're going to. Produce X number of units per year. It's purely mathematical. It's not anything to do with market conditions or realism, you know, site availability. Uh never mind the fact that towns obviously don't build housing. Developers build housing. Towns. Permit, and towns have a role in it, but it's not one of it. So so you're, in order to have a housing production plan, you have to show certain. Thresholds that you don't, as a town, don't control the liver system, whether you're going to hit those threshold thresholds or not, and the. Production numbers of, uh I think it's what, eight or nine affordable units per year. Unless you're dealing with a hundred percent affordable developments, which are almost non-existent. Uh even at a forty B percentage, that would translate to, call it thirty two units a year. If you're dealing with a ten percent affordability, it's dealing with eighty units per year. When you look at the number of new units built in West Newbury over the last twenty five years, it's been very steady. Twelve to fifteen units a year, and that's been a very consistent number for twenty five years. So the idea that. Your board is being asked, and the planning board is being asked by the state to take a vote. Committing to production of eight or nine affordable units per year, it's not going to happen. And it was, that bothered me for twenty five years, that the state requires towns to vote document. I think there's good in this document. But I think if people focus on the numerical thresholds, they don't hold up. And and this is, in my, in part, a lot of people get cynical about government, and that's why I wanted to make this point, is this this, these numbers are not something you're choosing. Or the planning board's choosing you, the state's opposing it, so.
I think all the other changes you made are are good.
Okay.
The comment I found funny in revision, not funny, the question, that that was my beef with the first time, remember their.
The demographics were way.
Way off.
Yeah.
We kicked it back and they corrected the most egregious, but I still don't agree with, the one that they've just added now is the disability rate. Of the population of West Newbury, like eleven percent.
Yeah, where did that come?
I that just.
I think in my comment, I said they should add a source, because I had no idea what I meant.
Doesn't, does that pass the smell test to you? Doesn't to me, not even close, you know, so.
But well, it depends on what you consider the spill here, yes.
Yeah, I mean.
And I'm not trying to be funny.
No, I know.
Definition, but it should definitely, the reason, source should be cited.
Yeah, it's it's a statement without any validity to it, because there is no backup and.
It it is based purely off of age and population. I mean, what percentage of people above sixty have some form of physical disability?
They said, no, if they did say over the sixty, if they said over sixty five, it's eleven percent, maybe, I would, you know, that sounds plausible, but. When you take the entirety of West Newbury, it does not, and without validation of any source. I, same with a lot of the other information, yes, let's just move on.
Yeah, good, there should be a second word, yeah. Good.
Okay, so do you want to follow up on this? I just want to make sure the planning board.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Thirty five, all right, next item is Memorial Day parade updates. Presenters list. I hope that Ross make all the present.
And Ross has said always the inter- internet processes, we get short parade day, but. Basically, each of the three of you will be kind of divvied up different uh roles in the in the ceremony, and uh. Rebecca's been doing awesome work. I think we're on track for the parade. Uh what she had in here is a a very working draft in terms of a kind of outline for the post parade. Uh ceremonies, and uh we're we're going to fill in blanks uh and and have been for some time, but uh. Just wanted to kind of keep it front of minds that the parade's coming up and um, so, yeah, you'll you'll each be given.
Well, should we just go through and decide?
Sure, yeah, that's.
Can I tell first?
What's that?
Can I make two comments first? Number one, I don't like doing this personally. It's not my thing, so if you want to keep me out, that is more than fine. I know you know that, I just don't like it, not comfortable, I don't.
Speaking in public?
Yeah, I'm a very quiet person, you know that, so uh, it's that. The other thing that just bugged me, and I mentioned it before and it's still here, number eleven, read list of names of residents who passed in twenty twenty three. This is Memorial Day. Memorial Day is for those who've died in active service. It's not even the same as Veterans Day. Veterans Day is for those who serve and serve and are serving. And yes, it's unfortunate that people have passed, but it's not the intent of Memorial Day. So, I mentioned it a few years ago, and people agreed, and it still. Continues. I'm not going to take a hard stance on it, just.
So did, what is, it always, all residents?
So.
I remember after COVID, we did three years and.
So the tradition is ha- has been. Prior to, I don't know, prior to Mike, but the way Mike explained it to me was he provided a list of anyone who died in the previous year. And it was written, it was specified if they served, you mentioned a ranch or something like that, but it it's up to you guys. And so if you, if you want to do it, all residents who passed in the last year, if you want to just do it to be veterans who passed in the last year. It's it's. It's technically not a veterans, it's those who died while serving. I mean, if if you had a parent or a spouse or a relative who died, it's, I mean, maybe ask Steve Vaughn. It seems almost disrespectful to the spirit of Memorial Day. You know, Veterans Day is another day that you celebrate those people too. I don't know, maybe it's just me being.
It's really up to you.
So do you want to reach out to to Ron, Ross, or to Steve and ask their opinion? I'm I'm fine if we want to change it. I don't, I'm not tied to. The way we've been doing it, if you feel strongly about it.
Yeah, we we can do that. I mean, Rebecca's in touch with them often.
Okay, if you can just share the concern and just ask for their.
I would ask for his opinion. He his opinion will kind of hold on to mine, let's put it that way.
I will say our grand marshal will be Dick Preble. So, yeah.
Uh who wants to do the welcome?
So this is.
Twenty till thirty.
The parade does.
The parade does, and then the ceremony is about typically about an hour afterwards.
Well, that, that won't work if you just say so.
Yeah, I'm supposed to exchange my daughter in Milton at noon on that day.
You can do that?
So I I can try and move that, but it's um sometimes not.
Yeah, so, um, so Milton, so you would have to leave here. Yeah, yeah, okay. We also march in the parade. I'm sure you'd be sad to miss that.
Do you like help taking your daughter?
That that is one thing I just want to ask, is, is there like some kind of designation that we are the selectboard, or? We look like just three random people behind the kids. I I don't know, it just would be nice if we're going to march in. So, yeah, if you could look into that also. All right, we'll work around your schedule.
Yeah, I might be able to tweak it by after.
All right, let just let us know in the pressure.
Okay, thank you. All right, so.
Maybe we should wait.
I'll just pencil in Wendy.
Oh, yes, that's right. I'm fine.
I will do whatever you need, but I just am not comfortable. I'll do what you need.
Chris is going to read the list of people that I.
If I have a list in advance, well. I I'm not going to go mispronouncing people's names. That's disrespectful. I've said that before, so if I'm going to do that, I want them in advance, and I want phonetics on the turkey ones.
All right.
I don't take people enough without trying to.
All right, we'll hold off on assignments pending resolution of. The list and and Ross's ability to forget. Um, seven forty.
I I do want to pay uh just particular uh recognition of David Schumacher, the music director of the bucket. Is just a terrific partner in all of this. I mean, we get a lot of support from a lot of different offices, but. Uh the the marching band uh has had. Uh, the the marching band uh has had some setbacks because of COVID, not as many kids doing bands. And so we're going to have more of a heavier emphasis on choir this year than you're used to seeing. But there is going to be a drum corps and the choir will be doing. So instead of the typical, what you're used to. So and he's just been very accommodating and flexible and working with us to to deliver the best uh. You know, ceremony we can, but the marching band is, you know, he he thinks it's coming back, but I guess we're told COVID was. You know, they they just didn't have the kids going into it that they used to, so.
Okay.
But he's been great, and he's actually on the shortlist for a Grammy.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. It's pretty amazing.
For his role as a, he's a quarter finalist.
Yeah.
For a Grammy. For his work with uh, he's himself. I didn't know they had quarter finals.
So who were you waiting for for Break Hill?
I, we know Gentsley said expressed interest and have been in touch and.
Okay, so we'll just move on at seven forty two, but. Uh, next item, review of the historical commission input on plaques and interpretive signage.
Uh, so really just some stylistic changes. I think personally, I think they did a really nice job. I think Max did a terrific job initiating this and I thought his designs were very good. Uh, and I thought the historical commission designs were were. You know, had maybe a little more. Well, I like the detail, the cursive kind of embedded in there. So our thought was going to be to have. A couple of these uh extra fabricated that we can all kind of make sure we like it and and before printing all of them. Uh, one issue that is going to, it looks like it's uh. It does not look like we'd be able to do the braille with a full translation. It's just becomes unwieldy. So we would look to potentially do more of a truncated version and braille. Uh, otherwise they they just become, you know, that large. So. And also whether the dimensions that Max had in mind, they may need to be a bit bigger to accommodate the text on some of them, so. But Russ, just for your background, this is, as you walk around the town offices, you'll see various. Narratives opposed to different next different exhibits. So a couple of months ago, uh, Max had initiated the idea to kind of. You know, get those to a a uniform design aesthetic and really kind of upgrade the aesthetic. And uh. Uh, so it's a great initiative. So that had come to the select board just as an informational item, maybe uh six weeks ago or so, and it was. Uh, referred to the historical commission for uh input suggestions and they loved the idea and uh. One of their members is very adept at graphic design and could come up with uh, you know, slight variation on the initial idea.
Did they change the language or just the?
I don't think so. I I don't think so. No, I know Max was very diligent about keeping the existing language and being very respectful of what's written today.
My only comment, as was last time, make sure they get approved.
Yeah.
A few times.
Yeah.
We saw some mistakes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see one in here now, the um on the up at Portland Farm, just ranging from, there's no space between ranging and from.
I didn't think we had approval, but.
I just happened to notice that.
Well, the other one I looked at, it talks about. TBD label the South End, the eBay and South End is not even on there.
So, but you're you're obviously approving them, right?
Yeah, Max will do.
I think I think you should have multiple people.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I want to commend Max for initiating this. I mean, it's kind of his project and he did a lot of work on it. So appreciate that. All right. I guess we'll just keep going until Jen logs on. You told her seven forty five?
Uh, yep, uh, but yeah, I think we're an hour or so. It's up to up to you if you want to.
All right, let's take the next item and go back. So item I is review of the list of active ongoing anticipated projects. So I think what Angus and I had talked about was um. Potentially the board meeting in. Eight, now June.
Either. I think June is probably more realistic, but whatever works logistically. Yeah, I think with the parade coming up next weekend, probably June.
So what we did last year, Ross, was just identify all the projects that we were aware of, that boards and committees had indicated on their questionnaire that we sent out to them. And then prioritize whether it's a immediate term, near term, or long term. And the idea behind this is just to try to give Angus some direction in terms of where staff time shouldn't spend. So ideally, you know, I'm not sure if we need one or two meetings to do this, but we met on a Saturday last year and just had like a working meeting to try to hash through this. And then we um. Came up with a list and then we invited boards and committees to come in and we presented it to them. That was in September. I'd like to do it in July this year, maybe earlier. Yeah, just to try to get everybody on the same page, so everybody understands, you know, why their project perhaps is not slated for the next six months. And I think we had also talked to Angus about separating the required ones so that it's clear what's what's a. Optional, you know, but desirable and what what is, what has to be done. Some of these things on here. You know, finance administration, like the PFAS class action, the water financial plan, those things have to be done. So I guess this is more just a heads up that this is coming.
Yeah, and one thing I I assume this would come up kind of toward the answer I put together, a couple of things just to put up on the screen, illustrative. If we if we circle back to Break Hill, just say the word and I'll stop talking, but this is. This is uh something you'd seen back in twenty twenty three. Uh, this was. Kind of the end game, and I probably won't take it this far because it does take some time to put this together. It's debatable whether you really get a return to this. So dynamic, I mean, things come up and. You know, sometimes they come up and they're they're done within a matter of a couple of weeks and so is uh. But this is a format I actually put together back in Westford in twenty ten and have used a number of times in both jobs and as a consultant to cities and towns and. It's got a lot more granular detail to what you've seen, specifically some of the features that I think are helpful as it includes the. Kind of the staff persons with uh Xs and Os as the X is kind of the prime mover on a different project and. Oh, it's like a support role, but I think it's very important to have clear project management. So there's accountability and that the department has to know what they are. Responsible for and that's not just accountability, it's really so they are empowered to to run with things. So this is something I put together and then I use this kind of color coding as to whether things are. Uh, if it's uh, you know, shaded green, it's complete. If it's yellow, it's underway. If it's red, it's something that's. Identified, it's on the list, but it's not really getting a meaningful amount of of effort at this point. Uh, which I think is important. That's the hardest question that elected boards have to. Uh, decide is what you're not going to do. It's very easy to say, oh, we're going to do everything, but you know, you run the reality of that, so. Uh, this also has some features of timing of like over the course of a fiscal year. Is this like Q one, Q two, Q three, Q four? Um, and I found this to be a helpful kind of. Framework for staff because, you know, in such a dynamic environment, and I will say, I think it's gotten notably better in the last couple of years. Uh, not just because we built, I think, a really strong team of personnel, but also I think this board has. Has been really active on trying to kind of wrangle all the different threads and have a cohesive kind of. Coordinated work plan. I think staff really, I know they really appreciate that because um. You know, it it justifies the level of effort people are putting in. If you're you're working toward, well, hey, yesterday, this was like. The top priority and today you're throwing forward things at me, like people get mixed signals. It's like, well. Really, what do you want me to do? Because I can't do every, you know, kids get frustrated, they get burned out and it's part of my job to make sure that doesn't happen. So. I want to just put this up briefly as as like. Once the board sets its priorities, you know, I can translate that into a kind of a management tool that people can then rely on and and. And then a different one that's more, this is what you have seen, but I added a couple of. Columns. I'm not totally thrilled with uh kind of the format, but I was trying to play around with with. Kind of how to make this more actionable. And so I took the same form out of Xs and Os. I only filled out a handful of them. Uh, you know, I could do that for others uh after you, either after or before you set the progress, because it is. Like if if we prioritize everything and. You have this forty initiatives falling on the town clerk's desk, that's important to know before. The board endorses those forty items because you're just setting yourself up for failure, setting setting that position or whatever position up for failure. I do think it's really important to kind of be mindful to make sure it's not falling too heavily on. On uh, you know, one desk or a couple of desks, uh, which just become obvious pinch points in the organization. Um, and then this is something I I did put together uh actually earlier today. I don't love it because it's very subjective, but I I I think it's kind of interesting. I'm happy to send this around and share it just as long as you understand it's like. You know, it's subjective, it's uh, but I I put in kind of level of effort to date and remaining moderate, low, high. There's not like a clear parameter on that, but it's kind of just what I observe, so. Uh, you know, some things I think like adoption of financial policies, definitely, you know, this started twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. This has been ongoing for for years and years. I think the remaining level of effort is pretty low. I think a couple of hours, honestly, a couple of hours to work, we can get that over the finish line. But there's a lot of things like that and that's part of why we're, you know, we have a lot of things that are like at the. Ten yard line or the five yard line, but just day in, day out. It's very hard for me to. Ignore the fire on my desk to like go work on a. Year-end closing policy when you can see from Jenny's memo, we we have that coal, like we're we're really in good shape. But we should have a written policy. We have a draft policy and we got over the finish line. Uh, we've got a bunch of things in that category, at least in my observation, that there's a fairly low level of effort remaining to get them done. Others that uh, you know, to this point have maybe got a low, lower level. I mean, here's a good example, looking at health insurance, design, plan, design, design changes. That's something me and Caitlin Gilbert and Jenny and Rebecca, we've had a number of meetings and discussions. We've met with our insurance throughout. Over the course of years and almost every year, we're like, oh, we'd like to make a run at this this year. We know the finance committee would like us to do that. I think there's there's financial. Reasons to do that. Um. But to actually bring that to planned design changes that affect people's health insurance or potentially percentage contribution. That has financial implications. It's got to be bargained, there'll be unions. It's a big deal to actually do that. So there's a reason why, like. We never get it past the discussion stage year after, and I'm now almost seven years in there. It's been on my list for seven years and counting. So they're the kinds of things that can easily be overlooked because. You know, until we get bite season, so a finance committee member will bring it up. Oh, have you done this? Well, no, we didn't forget. We just. Don't have the time. You know, there's a lot of things like that that I think, you know, it's. It's subjective, but I think it it might be interesting. To you, if I send this around, you can, you know, maybe with one-on-one meetings and you can say, well, tell me more about this one or what's really behind this or. It says here it's a high level of effort ahead. It doesn't seem that difficult. What what's behind that? And then we can talk in detail, but. I put that together and a couple of them I just put kind of like question marks because I frankly have no idea sitting here today, like the decarbonization roadmap. Is complete in a sense, the report's done. What's the level of effort going forward? That really has everything to do with the direction this board sets and gives to me and to staff. So there's, you know, at this point, uh. You know, about a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifteen things on the list. Um, some of these would be major level of effort. Some of these would be moderate, some would be fairly low. Uh, so I can get, you know, get that in circulation well ahead of the the goal-setting session, so. We can ideally have really informed discussions of uh and not just kind of like. Set a list, but really to try to get us totally in sync in terms of making sure that if the board wants to see. Project X done, that you know that that is, that's going to implicate major effort and. And what I, what I'm trying to always guard against is making commitments that we can't honor. Whether that's my office or whether that's this board, making commitments. That, you know, I'm I'm kind of here to help make sure that we're not saying, oh, we're going to do all these things when I'm sitting here knowing. Like, there's no way we can do all those things all the time. And and then that can become broken promises or that can become things that that members of the public or taxpayers. Come back later and say, well, you said you were going to do this. And it's like, I'm I'm here to help make sure that we don't make commitments we can't follow through on because uh. Um, you know, and there might be factors of that. I mean, obviously personnel turnover is a factor, you know, it takes a certain amount of time to. Hire someone new, get them up to speed. You don't know what their strengths are going to be. Uh, this summer, you know, a great example, we had to, once again, unfortunately pull the plug in the summer, um, Lance Stewart's program because. And and we really thought about it, but without a conservation agent, without a position here to manage those two seasonal staff. You really can't bring people in and just because it's not like there's a guidebook that we've got written that you just handed them, like someone's got to. Make sure they're trained, they're onboarded, they're set up with tech, they're they're, you know, plugged into the resource that they need to not just be. Uh, effective for the town, but that they get the educational experience that they're signing on to. It's not just labor, it's a curriculum aspect, so. Um, so anyhow, this is, you know, it's always been an evolving format. I've been working on this kind of thing for fifteen years and. You know, I still always feel like it's not quite right.
So are there changes you want to make in how we did it last year or?
I thought it went well. Uh, yeah, I mean, I think one what, one thing I think went well last year is we sent this around in Excel. And you could kind of manipulate it and you could set it and really put your own thumbprint on it so that when you. When we, when we convened or when the board convenes, you all kind of came into it with some some good. Thought that you've done ahead of time of where you personally, where each of you personally are coming from in terms of your priorities. And then have have good discussion about how those how those align and. What are those issues that either three out of three or at least two out of three of the board feels is very important? Because if there's an issue that only one of the three of you feels is very important. I need to take that into account because we have limited resources and we can't do everything. So I'm going to be most responsive to other things that. I deal with the unanimous, but at least a strong majority of the board is is favorable.
So the TBD IV code, that just means it was added after we had our meeting.
Correct. That was my way of telling you, like, if if some of these are like. I don't remember talking about that. It's because it wasn't on your list last July.
All right. So do we want to try to set a date now, given that?
Sure.
We have limited Saturdays or?
I'll just say one more thing and then I'll stop talking. So uh, this this is one I just added today. Because it's come up a number of times to come up with a a master list of O and M for the various buildings. I have a draft of that from twenty twenty that Wayne Wayne put together. It's not so, you know. Getting that to where it's like. Accurate and owned and embraced and and something good, you know. But I just added that today. It's been talked about for, you know, it's been mentioned, I'll say, you know, once or twice. Over the last couple of years. And just as I was looking at this today, I'm like, oh, my gosh, it's it's actually not on the list. So there's, you know, I'm constantly refining this and really have tried to make this complete. Um, but it's still always a living document and you will see things in the. Intermittent slogan with New Bird for, you know, you know, we've put a lot of effort toward that over the last five years. Uh, and there has been progress, but to actually get something done, is it going to be a continued sustained kind of high level of effort to to get something actually done accurately?
All right. We have a schedule for Saturday, so we can work on that.
Yeah, which which, are we looking at June?
Yeah, I think early June if we can pull down.
Yeah, so I have um. Uh, Saturday the fourteenth.
Okay.
Be sure you get it next flag day, you know. Yeah, I can do that.
Want to work for you, Chris, Angus?
I can do the morning after your application.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
What time are you free?
Uh. It, you know, ten would be best, but I can do it real. I play tennis seven thirty, nine thirty, but but I can definitely skip a week. Like, that's not going to kill me.
I don't want to be responsible for you missing.
No, it's fine. Honestly, it's fine. It's fine. I can also do Sundays. It just has to be like after twelve o'clock, so.
Then then I'm pretty much wide open.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could do most other weekends.
How do you feel about Sundays? I mean, is that on your being?
Fine on Sundays. Fine on Sundays.
Chris?
Yeah, so I could do Sunday the eighth, I could do Sunday the first, the fifteenth.
Fifteenth is Father's Day, so that's probably a bad idea.
First and the eighth, I could do.
Alright.
But, yeah, I mean, Saturday is, Saturday morning is fine.
Would you prefer that, send it Sunday?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so you wanna send the fourteenth then?
Let me just check my personal calendar, make sure I'm not, I know my, my anniversary is the thirteenth, but I don't think that that's really.
Go to a ruba or anything?
Really? Why is it yours?
No, it's twelve.
Did you have June twelve?
Yeah.
Okay.
How long we worked together?
Well, I just learned yesterday that, uh.
That was your anniversary?
I, I just learned, uh, yesterday that Molly and I share the same birthday.
Really?
The exact same day, we're only, well, I won't say how many, but we're, we're not far apart.
Several years apart.
Less than several, less than a couple.
Alright, so if you're really okay with missing tennis, I think at nine o'clock start, what year of the afternoon?
That's fine, yes, I do, yeah.
Alright, alright. Let's put it in and we can revisit it for next meeting.
Good, I know that, that would be very.
And then what's our meeting schedule in June? Just. So twelve and twenty.
Right, yeah.
At least that's the ones that you would. Pretty nice talk, bro.
So do we wanna stick with Thursday night? I meant to bring that up in the reorganization part. Thursday nights.
Yes, it, it coincides perfectly with my hot week right now, so I'm pretty wide open the whole week, but Thursday is also good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, and that's working for you, guys?
Yeah.
Alright.
And we did talk, uh, you know, about sliding everything back a day in terms of closing the agenda. Uh, and ideal getting the packets out, uh, at least to like eighty-five percent by late Monday instead of Tuesday. And then if anything kind of dribbles in Tuesday, like a smaller supplemental, but to give the board an extra day. Uh, that would require Rebecca and Wendy and I put together kind of a timeline. That would require really closing the agenda to new items on Friday. Uh, so that we would have like the prior Friday before the Thursday. Uh, that would allow the chair to review the agenda over the weekend so that Monday morning we would, uh, you know, know the agenda. And we could put together the packet Monday instead of Tuesday, and I do think that will work a lot better for the board members. And I think we can do that as long as, um, you know, and obviously the chair can always add things to the agenda right up until it's posted. But I think if we can set out to department heads and, uh, boards and committees that kind of, if you. Want or need something on the agenda, let us know later, and I think we said like ten AM the prior Friday. Cause what happens is, you know, often, and, you know, Chris, you know, assists really well, the packets go out late Tuesday. And when you look through the materials, you will see materials added at nine, nine thirty, ten o'clock Tuesday night. For a packet for Thursday night's meeting, and that puts us through the ringer, you know, routinely here till. Twelve, one o'clock in the morning Tuesday finalizing the packet for Thursday, it's just we're, we're on this like. Cycle, it's very difficult and part of it is we, we, we try to accommodate everybody. And I think we do a pretty good job, but it comes at a cost and if we can forward it back a day and stick to it, it's gonna allow the chair. To give me and staff clarity of the agenda and get the packets out ideally a day early.
Okay. Maybe for our next meeting, Chris, you had said you could have some things about meeting efficiency, if you wanna share those at the next meeting so that we don't bog down the goal setting with, with that kind of stuff. And, yeah, alright. Um, I don't see Jen online, so I should just go ahead with break hill.
Okay.
So, we need to come up with how we wanna handle snow and ice operations for this coming winter. The, the plan is to bring this to the next town election, correct? Angus?
Uh, I, I know that's the.
That's what we talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, is Ross, do you need a, a prime runs where we're at?
Yeah, I could, I could use.
I wanna do, okay.
You wanna do that?
Sure, so, um. Break Hill Terrace is not a public way, it was never accepted as a public way. Um, that. Really has been kind of in plain view for, for many years, um, and, uh, I'd say most notably in the early two thousands when there was a. Town meeting article brought forward to expend some funds to do some paving and it was explicit in the FinCom booklet that year, I think it was two thousand and five.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, then it was a private way and that this would be subject to further study. And then it kind of came across my desk, uh, much more recently, cause I wouldn't, I wouldn't aware of that. Um, and, uh. There was, the middle house was being rebuilt and so the builder had approached, uh, the water department to see about tying in. Well, the water infrastructure was never accepted as public either. Uh, and legally the town can't expend public resources on private way. But in practice, the town's been, uh, performing snow and ice operations there for, for a couple of decades. So there's, uh, so as we kind of pull back the onion on this and, uh, consulted with town council. Uh, I mean, really the question before you is, how do we handle it now that it's like we all know it's a private way? We, we can't, I mean, we, we'll do what the board directs, but we really ought not to be continuing to do something that we know is, is not legal. I mean, it's, it would be different than like plowing your driveway every winter, but really not that different. I mean, that's an extreme example, you know, but you get the point, it's, uh, we, we can't just expend public resources on a, on a private way, so. Uh, we have been working toward, wore an article this spring to basically evaluate the condition of the road. Uh, and, and, uh, if it seemed to be something the town wanted to bring forward or the board wanted to bring forward, public acceptance, the fall town meeting. That was kind of the direction that was being considered. And then, uh, second member of the FinCom who, who, uh, reminded us of this law, which is in place for exactly this kind of situation. Which can allow a town through its highway commissioners, which is the select board to designate private roads. For simply snow and ice operations, not for responsibility to like rebuild the road. Uh, but this particular statute requires a vote at the town election, not a town meeting. And the statute prescribes that it can only be put on the ballot with the signature of two hundred registered voters. So it's not something that this board can even bring to the voters yourselves, like there have to be the signatures, so. Uh, that creates kind of a ball of wax, um, and we wanted to kind of get ahead of this where. Uh, you know, winter's a ways off, but it's, it's gonna arrive and, uh, so I wanna make sure that Bush and his team have clear policy direction. There is a little more nuance in this particular case because the town owns the land on one side of the road. And, um, it's public open space with, with, uh, trail access there, so, um, you know. It, it's not, it's not like it's wholly private land all around it, it's, uh, it's a mix of public product.
So it is our intent to move forward with this law, Chris, are you on board with that or, I mean, I think we, excuse me, we need to decide that first.
To which one, to get the two hundred signatures and to?
With the plan to put it up, yeah, to, um, to pass the, um. Whatever law or whatever ballot question to allow us to.
Acceptance of, yeah. Well, so somebody's gonna get the two hundred votes, uh, signatures.
Right, I'm not, but I'm just saying in concept, are you okay with that? Cause I know you have some. Concerns about this whole situation.
I had less of a concern with this, I wanna explain to Ross. Um, the issue with the abiding, the town abiding property, we bought the Craven property, I can't, maybe five acres or something like that. And. This parcel at one point, I think in the nineteen sixties or nineteen fifties, I guess it was, was actually a part of the Craven property, I know it's Craven's owned it. This parcel got cut out right along the property bound and that's where this roadway went and they built a three lot subdivision. Pre-subdivision regulations, well, they went very loose. So the, the contention has been that because the town now is in a butt to the roadway, you own to the center of the road. My contention is never been a town except the road, therefore we don't know anything. It's sort of be like if I put a road in on my property and said to my neighbor, you own to the center, but take care of it, so. That's the issue that I get bothered by, plowing, I, it's been done, I don't have a problem. With the plowing, if we can get through this process, it makes it pretty simple, two issues I would have would be. It has to be an indemnification of liability from the abudist to the town. That is if the plow's chewed up the road, it's not our obligation to fix it, it's being plowed as a courtesy. And the second is a, a concern about there is no turnaround at the end of the road.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, Bush doesn't seem to think it's a problem with backing out onto a state highway. Where any significant vehicle can be. Another liability, so. Cause actually I don't have a problem with it, I think it's a courtesy to the abudis, that's for sure.
It seems to me like the citizens petition would have to come from the abudis, right, or?
I'm making it clear that I don't, I don't think that's our responsibility.
Yeah, what was your thoughts Angus on that, on the mechanics of that?
Yeah, I mean, each of you could sign as residents if you chose to, but, but the, the, the legwork to gather those signatures, I, I think would appropriately come from residents.
Yep.
That's a pretty high bar, which I would think would. Kind of discouraged, but pretty simple, alright, I mean, I think they could get the two hundred signatures, you know. But I just mean like, uh, from a precedent standpoint, like it, it, it is an effort, it would be an effort, you know.
Yeah, it's a lot more than the signatures to get a article on town meeting, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Which is ten.
Yeah.
Well, and also explaining why taxpayer dollars should be spent on, on private roads, right? But I think a lot of people will just sign it and then not. But.
Well, then it goes to town meeting for discretion, that's what that will.
Well, no, they won't.
No, it's about, it goes right to the ballot.
Oh, it doesn't even hit town.
There's a ballot question, yeah, so do we, does the select board take a stance on it at any point in the process or it's just independent of us? The board itself would not take a position, individuals could take any position they choose. So you're elected officials, so like Angus can't take a position on it being the town manager, but because you are individually. Elected officials, you can get any stance you want on any item.
But there's really no form to do that, I guess, right, it's not like.
Correct, yeah, and one thing that you, you cannot do is expend public resources to advocate for or against a ballot question. That gets into the campaign finance, uh, once something's done, now it's a different situation than a town meeting. Uh, so for instance, like a mail or, or use of, uh, you know, even staff time, uh, to advocate for or against. You can do informational, uh, but you cannot do advocacy as a, as a board or to direct resources. As like Jim said, as individuals, you can take whatever position you want, but.
So we're not involved in the process, this is basically we hands off, it's up to the abudis to call for that.
Could review legal ease of it, like if they came to the town and said, hey, we wanna do this. We could absolutely sit and say, hey, town council, is this appropriate language for this to be accomplished?
Mm-hmm.
But that's really the extent of like public resources for them, like printing off the papers for them to get signatures on, that's really a problem.
Yeah, well, in the form of ballot questions right here in the packet, it's, it's, it's prescribed by the statute, so. Um, and there's some, I know this has come up a number of times before in terms of, uh, any kind of constraints on. On advocacy for or against an issue and it does get very nuanced. I do have some resources in my office from the Mass Office of Campaign Finance, which I can get into circulation because, uh, it's not gonna come up very often. But, uh, this is an instance where if something goes to a ballot, it is, it's a different animal than a town meeting article. And so I think it's good to get that information circulated sooner than later, just.
For all, all elected officials.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's tripwires there and, uh.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we've set it up reasonably accurately, but I know, uh, you know, there's, there's some details that you can make your own determination.
Can the town require some level of indemnification? I mean, if you go and, if this would have passed. And the town goes into plow, they have a, suppose a plow truck backs out, takes out their fencing. Who owns that? I mean, this is the reason.
It'd be the same as if like I was going down the road and took out someone's melons.
But that's a public way, this is a bright.
We actually do, uh.
Big difference.
Uh, we do, uh, sure. In cir- circumstances, we'll actually replace them.
Yeah, watch, this is, oh, I can use it. Is liability rather than, uh, law?
Uh, I, uh, I don't recall if that came up in the, um, town council opinion, but that's, I, I'll, I'll look into that. I, I don't recall.
I mean, also has to be consideration for the town employees with being able to get in and properly plow too.
Alright, so it sounds like we're in general agreement to move forward with that, now what about snow and ice this winter? Are we okay with continuing the status quo until it's resolved?
I probably have a different mind than Ross, cause last year a letter was gonna get sent out to let them know they're gonna have to address it and then it was a meeting. And then it slayed, no pun intended, and we're back again, so I, I. I, what if?
You mean the meeting that Angus and I have with them?
Yeah, and I think at that point there was. Some agreement that the town continued plowing, I assume.
For that winter, but we had agreed that in the select board meeting prior to that. I mean, that's.
Prior to that, it was, they was gonna be sent a letter that they were gonna have to deal with, it just evolved to the point that we're doing it again.
Yeah. So are you comfortable for this coming year, knowing that we have a plan in place to? Or do you think we should tell them just plow your own boat?
Well, there is a, uh, we don't have a plan in place, they have to have a plan in place, which is to get the votes and signatures, so. Um, suppose that's why, suppose we almost get a spring town meeting. I'm fine, go ahead with it, I just, it's.
So how about if we send them a letter outlining what our plan is and their requirements and say that the town will agree to continue plowing your road for this winter? So we expect that.
Well, how, how about, I mean, we're several months away, uh, you know, winter's, uh, you know, what, good five plus months, five, six months away. I, I would think the board might feel better about making that decision if, uh, the signatures or at least some significant percentage had already been submitted. And that way you have a much greater level of assurance, it will in fact be on the ballot next spring because you can't control that outcome.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would give them a deep defined vote.
Yeah, it can't be too early, right?
No, because it goes to the next town meeting, you could.
Or it goes to the next ballot, next, next election.
Uh, which is town, town election.
Yeah, okay.
So they can gather the ballots, we could say you have to have in by October first and we're gonna continue the plow.
Yeah.
And so that would go with.
Okay. That a good ask?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, there's a couple correspondence, things on here, any questions or comments on that?
Jim, I didn't even understand.
Yeah, those ones from the grid, I really talk.
From the what?
From the grid, National Grid.
Oh, I, it's smart data, but I, so I already saw my buzzer and I'm gonna read my beautiful ears.
I think it's a million water meeting, I made it from the street, can't I? I personally couldn't miss my, it was just most of them.
The best election, right?
Yeah.
But they already read mine somehow magically, nobody's come up to my property in years. I still pay a bill like.
I was gonna say, I said nothing, I'm metering correctly and they just asked me how much it interests you, you just say.
Maybe it's an estimate. Anyways.
You're gonna get a big jump when they walk down, I know, Chris.
Alright, any comments or questions on the correspondence?
The Pima flood mapping thing, what's that on, do you understand what they're?
No, it's addressed to me, um.
I read it, my eyes pleased over, you know.
Yeah, that's just the update, right, Angus?
Yeah, just the update on the, uh, the flood chart, rate maps.
Until July eighth, the twenty twenty-five to adopt floodplain management measures that we need to receive the national floodplain insurance regulatory requirements?
Yeah.
Have we done that?
Yes, that was what town meeting voted on, uh, the, the.
Okay.
By law, I remember, so. Yeah, that one, I hope, uh, DCS is the state minister. And, uh, we did take that, uh, climate plan, uh, and sent that to Chip Wallace.
Okay.
To circulate the energy. To circulate the Energy and Sustainability Committee. Well, I sent it to Chip, uh, I, maybe I should have sent it before, I didn't think to do that.
Alright, that, anything else, that's it for the session, right? Alright, I'm.
Was there a reason that I don't see it not included in the packet?
I see which one.
It is in there.
The DPF, the iPhone, the national grid, that's on the female. That's why I was hanging around, I wanted it.
You can see, you can have it right here.
This is this one here?
Yeah.
I wonder if it's not on the.
Was it a order?
We'll get on the copy, if you want a physical copy.
Yeah, that'd be great, huh? Yeah, one thing, uh, just when you, uh, look at, when you pull up these packets, everything's hyperlinked.
Yeah.
So you can actually just click on the topic and.
Oh, yeah. I was just scrolling through the packets.
Oh, okay, yeah, see it, thank you. Yeah, I I don't know why the, uh, the box doesn't show up, it it really annoys me, because it does on the one we create. But when we post it on the web. They're invisible, and it's very annoying, because I imagine as a resident, you get frustrated trying to sort through a two hundred and eighteen page.
It also takes a long time to hide, I think, every single one.
Well, it's actually pretty, it might take you, I could do the whole thing, but anyway. Well, you know, we we go the extra mile to kind of make things like really easy, but it doesn't. If you're gonna, you can, or you could put like a little disclaimer. We could, yeah, yeah, and all information is listed everywhere, yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, how, wait, how about that, look. To access the backup materials, to pick up the agenda, I don't know which one.
There's a disclaimer. Alright, I move to recess, open session, and go to executive session for MGL chapter thirty, section twenty one, eighty-two, three, and six. On paper, read. Say your name.
Hi. Hi, Ross. You'll ask, Fraser.
They're going into executive sessions, gotta be a roll call vote, I, I.
And we'll be coming back into open session just to adjourn.
Yeah, the, uh, we'll recess to executive session, and we'll resume, return to open session for for the sole purpose of adjournment.